Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, January 10th. It's about 7:35. This is a public hearing and a general meeting tonight of the Planning Zoning Commission, and we are here in room 206 in Town Hall. We're going to start the public hearing first, and then after the public hearing, we're going to shift into a general meeting. So without further ado, let's get started right away. Do you want to change the batting order and do Royal first?
I think I need an answer here for Hindley.
All right. Okay. Okay, we're going to start right away. First item on the agenda is continuation of site plan application number 286A is an apple, Darien Board of Education, Hindley Elementary School, 10 Near Water Lane. I'll read the entire thing for us. Proposed to renovate and construct additions to Hindley Elementary School, including eliminating temporary portable classroom buildings, replacing the library learning commons, correctly sizing general and special subject classrooms, upgrading building systems, adding parking spaces to the bus loop, and perform related site development activities, including adding landscaping, plannings, restoring and adding hardscape to areas, and improving stormwater management. The 9.6 plus or minus acre subject property is situated on the east side of Near Water Lane at the southeast corner conformed, formed by its intersection with Boston Post Road, and is shown on assessors map number 51 as lot number 43 in the R1 half residential zone and the municipal use overlay zone MU. The public hearing opened on November 15th, 2022, and I think this is our second night of public hearing.
Great.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Please just state your name for the record, and I think you're going to take us down the road today?
Absolutely. Hi, Eric Keier, KGD, here representing the town of Darien and Darien Public Schools. Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Here to present and have the discussion related to Hindley Elementary School and then following up with the Royal Elementary School. Here with me tonight is Chris Price, who is Chair of the Hindley Homes and Royal Building Committee, Lauren Meyer from KGD Architects, Joe Canis, and Craig Yanis. Most of this discussion for this first project is going to relate to stormwater management as well as we'll go through construction phasing. But just very quickly, this is the existing front elevation on the top, and we've been meeting with the Architectural Review Board, and they've asked us to do some work on the front elevation in terms of hardscape and landscape material. And so this is some of the material that we will be sharing with them next week. And with that, this is the site plan, and I'm very quickly now going to turn it right over to Joe Canis, and he can walk you through the stormwater topics.
Thanks, Eric. For the record, my name's Joseph Canis. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, also a principal engineer with Tianbond. I am the engineer that did the stormwater management design for the proposed improvements at Hindley. So our last hearing was on November 15th, and a lot has happened since then. So just a quick rundown of what's happened in the in-between time since our last hearing. We received peer review comments. Those comments were very helpful, they're very constructive, and I think they led to a better project. We did respond to those, and we have a letter from your peer reviewer stating that we are in compliance with Section 880. There are some minor comments that we need to address before the building permit, but and we'll certainly do those. The other thing that happened, we did have a meeting with, between the design team, the building representatives of the building committee, and DPW. We also, that was also very helpful, very informative. We got a better understanding of the site constraints and some of the DPW's issues out there. DPW has cleaned the catch basins and pipes on pasture lane. The Board of Education is working on cleaning the pipes and its drainage easement. They identified an obstruction on the property of Fort Pasture, which they believe is a buried structure, and they are working to get that exposed. They are waiting for their call before you dig clearance. That takes about 72 hours. And based on all this, we've revised our plans, and revised plans were submitted late last week. Okay, so I just want to quickly just go over our design goals. And these design goals, they align with Section 880 of the zoning regulations which pertain to stormwater management. And you probably know most of them already, but let's, I thought it'd be helpful to reiterate those to guide the rest of the discussion. First of all, there's going to be no increase in peak flow from the site. We've achieved that. Your regulations also require that there be no increase in volume from the site, and we've documented that in our updated engineering report. And then finally, reduce peak flow and volume for the downstream neighbors. There's a section in the regulations that encourages applicants to do what they can to remedy, to the best of their ability, downstream drainage issues. And so that was also incorporated as a design goal for the revised plans. So with that said, I'll walk you through some of the principal plan revisions. The biggest one was we've replaced that proposed detention pond along the south side of the building. And again, just to orient everybody, south is to the right, north is to the left, so that means the water is over here, and the post road is over here on the left. So what we replaced it with is an underground chamber system. As you can see, we have about 135 chambers for this system, and it's been placed parallel to the general direction of the contours in that area to better disperse the exfiltration. So that's the captured runoff that is absorbed into the ground. We disperse it, and that's one of the reasons why this system's long and linear as opposed to more square, like you might see in other projects. And this system is, also captures and infiltrates all the contributory area up to and including a 25-year storm event. It's designed for the hundred, but for storm events up to and including the 25-year event, there'll be no drainage coming out of that infiltration system. The other thing, this was a very good comment that our peer reviewer had, was the courtyard conveyance system. That's been designed for a 100-year system, and we use the 100-year tailwater in the chamber, right? Because what you'll see here in the blue is the pipe system leading from the courtyard headed to the west, so that's the top of the page, and it makes a right turning south and discharges into that chamber system. What we did was, we, our analysis showed what the 100-year elevation inside those chambers was, and we applied that to the hydraulic analysis of that storm drainage system. And the reason for that is that courtyard's enclosed, so there's real, no real overland path for water escape there. So that's why, instead of doing a typical 25-year design for conveyance, it is a 100-year. The other feature that we did add there was a, which was included in our initial design also, but just to reiterate, we do have another sleeve beneath the building. You'll see the pipe there in blue crosses beneath the proposed building addition. We have another sleeve next to that in the event that something does happen to that pipe that's there that we have proposed. So that's kind of like a belt and suspenders approach on that one. We're also including a high-level overflow to near water lane from the proposed chamber system. So what will happen is in the larger storms, as that chamber starts to discharge through the four-inch pipe that leads out of it, low flow will continue to go to pasture lane. Whereas, you know, the storm grows more intense, as the water level builds up in the manhole outlet control structure, it will start to head towards near water lane. There's some available capacity in the storm sewer system in near water. There's not a lot of it. We were able to pick some capacity up by demolishing the library in front of the building, so we did lose some impervious surface there, and we're trying to make the most of that and sending some of the overflow to near water lane. So a little bit about the underground chamber systems, you're probably familiar with these, but just a quick overview of what they are. These are, they're constructed out of plastic. You can see what, that's what they look like on the right there, upper right. And the intent for these is to reduce the peak flow and volume. And what they do is they store the stormwater beneath the pavement or beneath the grass into these chambers, as well as the void space in the stone that surrounds it. So the stone is both structural, it also provides additional storage. And in our case, our pipe, outlet pipe is near the top of the chamber. So the only way for the stormwater to get out of the chamber is to exfiltrate into the ground. So it infiltrates in, and what that does, it recharges the groundwater. It also reduces the peak flow and volume coming from the site. And we have, you know, we had done infiltration testing, we had some very favorable rates out there. And then what you see in the lower right there is a cross-section of a typical system. So if you're to, you know, cut right across it, what you would see is, again, you see the chambers, they sit on a bed of stone, you know, it's six to 12 inches deep, and they're also surrounded by about a foot of stone on all sides. So that's, that's what they look like. And again, it encourages infiltration to replicate the existing hydrologic cycle. The other thing, too, is they're traffic rated, right? So there's sufficient cover over them so that you'd be able to drive a vehicle over it without it collapsing, because obviously, even though it's off the sidewalk, that's not to say that they're not, might not be equipped and brought onto it at some point in its life. And the other, the other benefit of this over the detention pond is that it saves space, right? It's underground, so you can use the space above it. In this case, it's just being used as a grassed area. But it gives you a little bit more flexibility in what you can do with the site. So the chambers that we're using are a specific size, they're about, I want to say, 30 and a half inches high. So the question is, why didn't we use a larger chamber? This is a question I ask myself, try to maximize what we could put out there, and this is the largest chamber size that we could get out there because, and there's going to be a little bit of math here involved, but it's not that bad. So the ground elevation's at approximately 49. That's the low point over the system. The, and what our, what our, deep hole tests are, where we did, you know, dug a test pit to see where the groundwater was, and groundwater elevation's at 42, right? And the regulations require that would be at least one foot above the groundwater. So that means the bottom of our system needs to be at 43. And if you remember, I said at the bottom of the chamber, there's about a foot of stone, right? So the bottom of the stone has to be 12 inches above groundwater, as you see here. The stone layer is six to 12 inches thick. Therefore, the bottom of the chamber needs to be about five feet below grade, right? So if you already lost two feet, one of the groundwater, one to the stone. But the other thing is that the incoming pipes need a minimum of two feet of cover, otherwise they'll get crushed if machinery were to go over them. And, you know, two feet, but don't forget, these pipes, you know, where they hit the chamber is the absolute low point in the system, so you need a little bit more. So that's really what dictated the size of the chamber, therefore, we only have about three feet of vertical space for the chamber available. So that's why we chose this particular chamber. It was the closest we could get to three feet without going over, kind of like the Price's rate of stormwater design. So another thing that dictates the amount of runoff that you get from a site is the amount of impervious cover. And what you see here on this drawing is the impervious cover is under existing condition. And one of the things I did want to point out in this drawing here, and I'll back up here, is that the, everything you see on this drawing is, drains towards pasture lane, with the exception of this half of the building, you can see here, our label has EXWSO2B, and then this EXWSO2A. So these two areas in the southwest corner, I don't know if I have the ability, no, I don't, but those are the two areas at discharge in near water. Everything else, right, including the north parking lot goes along the west side of the building and then discharges south towards pasture. This drawing shows, oh, great, thank you. All right, so this is the proposed conditions impervious cover. And what you can see is, a lot of the addition is being built on top of existing impervious cover. In addition, right, the courtyard is a fairly big hole, you know, the new courtyard helps to balance out some of that impervious area that's at the core of the site. So what you'll see here in the lower, if I pointed the right way? All right. But what you see here is the total impervious coverage, and we're actually reducing impervious coverage by .001 acres, so basically, it's a wash. The other thing that we look for, too, as engineers, is the directly connected impervious coverage, and that speaks water-water quality. And that's impervious coverage that's discharged without treatment. And what we're doing by including this proposed chamber system, we're disconnecting a fairly significant amount of impervious cover, which is 1.605 acres. So this one shows, in the background there, you see the proposed, the proposed conditions with the addition. And what you see in green is what will be going to pasture lane directly, right? We're piping it around, it doesn't go into the system, it bypasses the infiltration system. What you see in blue is the new, the new, the addition, the courtyard. We're also taking part of the west, western part of the roof, the new play area, as well as a portion of the field which drains towards the play area. All that will go into the chamber system. And then what you see here in pink goes directly to near water lane. Now, one of the things, there is an existing detention system on the site, and that's the reason why this north parking lot is in a darker green. You'll see in that red square, that is the existing detention, retention system in that parking lot. And here's a sampling of how it reduces flow, and it has a pretty significant reduction because you see the size, if you compare the size of the system compared to the size of the contributory area, there's some pretty, pretty good reductions in peak flow as a result of that system. So with the chamber system that we're proposing, this is for proposed conditions, right, for the 25-year event, and for smaller events as well, at least 70% of the runoff will be directed towards pasture lane and 30% towards near water, right? And this is only for the areas in green and blue, right? This doesn't include the area in pink, right? So that's everything that could possibly go to pasture. The idea is here is to show how much is going to be diverted in terms of what could possibly be going to pasture. But for larger storms, you start to see a little bit more starts heading towards pasture, and that's because the system begins to fill, so, and that's when it starts to spill over to near water.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So you've got two versions of going to pasture lane, I think. The light green is just sheet flow to pasture lane, which is not really to pasture lane, it's going over the neighbor's property?
Okay. Just a clarification, that's a good point. Okay, so dark green goes first to the infiltration system that's here.
Right.
Okay? So that, the runoff coming out of the infiltration system goes into the onsite storm drains through this green area and heads this way, and then it's picked up by the relocated storm drainage system. The other thing that happens-
And then it goes into the system?
It does, it bypasses it, right? It bypasses it.
It goes where? When it bypasses, it goes where? Into near water?
Okay, yeah, right. So then it goes-
To the neighbor's property.
Turns, and then goes down into pasture. The-
Is that, is that piped to pasture?
It's piped.
So, so everything in green there eventually gets piped into pasture, or is the light green sheet flow to the neighbor's property and then to pasture lane?
It's piped there. This area here is captured by drains, so most of that is piped. There is probably some sheet flow here that, from that southernmost, that sheets off in this direction, but the vast majority of it is piped.
Okay, and then the larger light green area on the northern side? What, what happens with the, with the stormwater there?
Okay. So there are drains that are situated around the building here, 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 here. There's also one here, one here. So that's all connected into the same pipe system.
Okay, and that all, again, goes into that pipe to pasture?
Right. The blue area is what's picked up, right? And this is our additional impervious coverage from the addition, the courtyard, the paved play area. It's basically the area that's, you know, really being disturbed as part of the project. That's picked up and put into the chamber system. Chamber system outlets here, once you start getting a storm event that's greater than a 25-year intensity, it'll flow this way for low flow, and as it starts building up, it'll start flowing out towards near water.
Okay, and the percentages for pasture lane versus near water, is that, is that 25, 50, 100-year storm at 70, 72, 74?
Right, yeah. So this is a year storm event, 25, 50, 100. And then this is the distribution of the total rainfall that falls across the green and the blue areas.
It's interesting, why does the high flow go down at the heavier storm events?
The high flow goes down in the heavier storm events, you mean, why does the, the percentage to near water go down? It's a function of, right, you get more runoff, because, right, this starts to spill out when you're headed 25-year capacity, right? So what you're, what you're starting to see is, right, you're basically infiltrating everything you can. Everything else is spilling out in two directions. But what you'll see in the subsequent slide is really not so much distribution, but the net total of existing versus proposed. This is kind of like showing a distribution of proposed conditions. So I think that's, might be a slide or two down.
Great.
I might better answer your question.
Before you go off of that first thing, go back to, in the light green area, right, it's going to be to the right of the new parking lot is all green grass fields, right?
To the right of-
There's a new parking lot up top on the post road.
Oh, right up here?
Yep.
Well, that's, that's existing.
Cool.
Yeah, but-
Right, that's, yeah, that's the basketball court.
Right, that's the basketball court, we're just putting strapping on it.
Yep. So now, all that green grass, you have all that, you're saying that all that green grass, when, when it rains or it snows, instead of going into the ground, right, where it's sitting, it's going to go all the way over to pasture lane?
Well-
That doesn't make sense to me.
There's, there's a couple of things that happen with this, right? When it rains, right, down the fields, some of it does get soaked into the ground, right? Eventually, what happens is if the storm's heavy enough, you're going to get, that ground's going to become saturated. At that point, that rainfall that's been soaking in the ground turns into runoff. And that runoff will come across the field, and it'll be captured by drains around the school here. You know, around the edges here, yeah, there could be some sheet runoff, but the intent is, for example, you'll see here, we have a swale off to try to capture as much of this into the drainage system as we can.
So that's, and when does the ground get super saturated in like a rain event in July?
In a rain event in July, you know, again, it depends on how dry it's been, right? It, you know, with average conditions, you know, typically, it take, you know, the first tenth of an inch is going to go directly into the ground. Once you start getting over a tenth of an inch, you know, up to a quarter of inch, that's when you start to see some runoff. But what happens in those cases is that as it flows across, you tend to lose some, but basically, I would start, I would say around a quarter of an inch, once you start seeing more, more runoff. And obviously, the more precipitation that you get, the more runoff you're going to see.
So I can't sound this, what's the spot elevations on the, the east side of the property versus the center of the property versus the south?
Okay.
Because you're saying that the prop, what you're, what you're saying is the property slopes east to, east to west.
Right.
So top to bottom.
It, well, there's a low point here.
Just, just stay, stay next to the basketball court.
Yeah.
On the other side of, yeah. Stay between, between the post road and the blue.
Okay. So what happens here, if you look at the contour lines, there's a, it slopes this way, it slopes that way, but then if you look at this contour line, it starts to straighten out, so it starts sweeping this way. So it starts to sweep towards the southwest.
What's, what's the, what's the delta? Is it a foot? Is it six inches?
Let's see. Well, you know, near the street, it looks like, based on this, it's probably about four feet, you know, at the end of the basketball court. In that distance, here, it's one, two, three, four, maybe five feet, once you get to, I'd say where the hoop is.
Joe, would you mind picking up the-
Oh, sure.
-mic? Thank you so much. Just take it right out of the pen.
Six feet to 51, so it's a nine.
Thank you.
Sixty. Two hundred and seventy to sixty. I had to guess.
So it's 58 up there, I see.
Yeah, 58.9, let's say it goes down to about 51-ish by that corner of the, you have to do where the current longitude is, so it's going to be about eight feet of slope.
Which is boundary restriction. So that says 53.8 right next to the six? See that six here?
I'm looking more. Yeah, 53.6, I'm looking a little bit further over 51.7, so there's still even two feet if you just go right a little bit. Actually, two feet to drop.
Okay.
Would it make sense to just go through the whole deck and then-
Yes, no, it does.
So this next slide compares the existing conditions to the proposed conditions, and what we're looking at here is peak flow, which is about, you know, cubic feet per second, which tells you, which is the primary metric that we look at in terms of flooding, and it tells you the volume per second, so it's basically a rate of flow. We looked at the two, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year events, and the south design point one is pasture lane. And what you see here is that we've reduced the peak flow anywhere from, you know, 28, 24, 35, 22, and then for the hundreds, down seven and a half percent. So it's a reduction across the board for the storm events. And just as a reminder, the town has a 50-year design frequency as our standard, so we've reduced it 22.8% for that. We've also extended the system further to address the 100-year storm event. In terms of near water, again, we're also seeing, we're also seeing some reductions there, as you can see, not quite anywhere near what we're seeing go into the south toward pasture. And this reduction is principally because of that proposed detention system. We're taking that impervious cover and we're infiltrating it into the ground. We also looked at volume, which is on the next sheet, which is just a complete, just total raw volume, and there's no time component to it. And this is measured in cubic feet, and you can see, again, we analyzed the same storm events and towards pasture lane compared to existing conditions, we're seeing reductions across the board for all the storms, although there's a very slight increase in near water lane in terms of volume. The proposed retention system volume, just for comparison, is 12,314 cubic feet. Just to relate cubic feet to gallons, one cubic foot is 7.48 gallons. So one of the questions you might have is, well, how can that be if the system's that small? But don't forget, the infiltration system, as flow's coming in, it's also leaving by soaking into the ground. And our infiltration rate includes a 2.0 factor safety, so in the field, we actually measured 11, but for the purposes of 11 inches per hour, for the purposes of our design, we've used 5.5 inches an hour. So again, and that's, that is required by the Connecticut Stormwater Manual. So a little discussion on what's downstream of us. So this orientation is so that, to the south is to the right, north is to the left, Hindley School is here, near water, post road. We have the piping in near water. It goes down, past pasture lane, which is here, and then eventually changes from a 12-inch RCP to an 18-inch, and then makes its way out to Holly Pond. In addition, right, we have a pipe that leaves Hindley and travels on an easement on Fort Pasture Lane, that easement is eight feet wide. It's a perpetual easement for a 12-inch pipe. It's recorded at volume 193, page 425, page two, paragraph one in the Darien Rand records. That pipe enters the pasture lane right away, and then it, then it crosses private park- And then it crosses private property between 38 near water and seven pasture. That, it's unknown if there's an easement there. And it's not really documented very well. And then what you see here, at this point, there's another easement from nine pasture to near water, which was mapped, shown on a map in 1949, and again, ownership of that hasn't been determined. But we do have public right of way, so we go from, through a documented easement into the public right of way. So that brings us, brings me to my next slide, why not send it all to near water? And so I mentioned, we had that meeting, DPW did not want increased flow to near water. They had some concerns about the capacity of the system out there. We also did our own analysis and determined that if we did exceed the capacity out there, the catch basin, there's a catch basin just south of the Hindley driveway. That would bubble up and overflow on a near water. Obviously, that would make that situation worse, which we certainly don't want. And it could be an icing concern near the school in the winter. Another concern that we didn't think about initially, DPW brought up some concerns that you don't want to cut off flow completely because that drainage system feeds a wetland area south of pasture lane. The other thing is that the near water system invert is not as high. I'm sorry, the invert is, actually, I'm sorry, this is actually reversed. The near water lane system is higher than the pasture lane system, which means that we'd have to go with shallower chambers, which means a larger footprint. But again, remember, our depth is restricted by groundwater, so we'd have to increase the footprint of that system. And because near water lane system, the invert there is 44 and change versus 42 and change at pasture, that means we'll be more susceptible to backwater effects from near water lane, which could flood the chamber system. Just as a reminder, the town stormwater design standard is 50-year. The detention system is sized for 100-years, so we're exceeding the town standard for the design. Courtyard conveyance system is designed for 100-year, when the standard is at 25. And I'm sure you've seen in K GND's renderings that there is a green roof on the addition. Those tend to reduce stormwater loads. We did not take credit for that in our analysis. So in summary, peak flow to pasture lane is reduced 22% for the town design standard storm, which is a 50-year. The total volume pasture lane is reduced 25% for the 50-year storm. So we're sending less water and reducing the peak flow to pasture lane as a result of the improvements. The design balances the GPW comments that we received, the physical constraints of the site, neighbor flooding, and ecological concerns. We realize that this doesn't solve the neighbors flooding issue, but it will make it, it'll improve the conditions. Again, the 50-year design has been exceeded with the 100-year design. It enhances student safety and allows usable green space versus the previous pond concept. And then finally, we also met the maintenance requirements of the school district. We instituted some things on the catch basins, such as four-foot deep sumps to enhance sediment removal. And there's a lot, we've also included a lot of inspection ports and access ports above the proposed system to facilitate access so that you can get to it from either end, so that, to help them with the maintenance on the system. So that concludes the stormwater piece of this. And next up is the landscape, but I figure we'll take a little pause here to answer any questions, give me what you might have on stormwater.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Appreciate the redo of it. I'm going to try to go back to, I'm going to call it page 12 or 13. And then even 10. Yeah, go one more, go next. Even close.
One more?
No, keep going. Go, yeah, keep going. Bingo. All right, stop there.
Okay.
Okay, the last time, the last time we met, my thought was to split the building, you know, north and south for, you know, two separate detention systems, okay? Which is going to be, we're staring at now, is left and right. My understanding is that you split the building east and west, or top and bottom.
Right.
Okay, so what I want you to make sure everybody knows is, right where, I'm going to say it's the old front door of the school where the library was. Yep, right there. There's a new pipe that goes from there directly to near water lane in the new bus loop.
That's correct.
Okay, can you highlight that so we know?
Yeah, so that's right here, the new pipe coming to a manhole here in the extended bus loop, and then out to near water.
Okay, so if you go to the next slide, which is with the pink, bingo.
Yeah.
What that's, I'm guessing it's telling you that everything that's in pink that comes off the building goes into that new pipe and goes directly into near water lane.
That's correct.
Okay, so instead of splitting the building left and right, you're splitting it top and bottom?
That's right, we're splitting it east-west.
East-west, exactly. And looking at the page we're staring at, it's the top side and bottom side. So you did the same exact thing that I asked you, but instead of doing, you just spun it, you know, on a dot. So if you go to your next page, or I'm going to call it again, page 13, in terms of, you don't have to, yeah, you're there, okay? So in terms of percentages, the building of itself is 100%, right? So it looks like more than half of the building's going south, or actually west, was going down, and the other half is not.
Right, yeah, so basically, the pink part of the building going to near water.
It's going directly to near water through this new pipe that's in the bus, that's in the loop.
Yeah, what's in blue is going directly, the building part in blue is going directly to the chamber system.
Okay.
And the building part here in green will continue to go out to pasture as it does today.
Okay, then explain again the dark green parking lot on the other side. Because for everyone's, and I went out there in the rain with these guys and did a site inspection. And we found some of these things that exist, and I physically saw them myself.
Okay.
So explain the dark green and what happens there.
Okay, so the dark green is principally the north parking lot. And there are catch basins around the perimeter of the parking lot, they're kind of dispersed low points. And what you see here in the dark red is that those drains connect into an underground detention system there, right? So these, so anything in this dark green area is routed in, any drop of rain that falls in this dark green area ends up in this detention system here that's existing.
Okay, so when we were back here together on whatever it was, November 15th, I was under the impression that every single drop of water went through this 12-inch pipe that went through four pasture lane that we don't know who owns it, right? Now, I'm finding out that that's not the case, that the dark green goes into a detention system, right?
Right.
The pink goes directly into near water lane.
Right.
Right? The blue goes into the brand-new system.
Correct.
And I just have a question of the light green on why some of that doesn't go into the ground. And that's what I was alluding to earlier.
Okay.
So we technically have four systems working on the property. Is that the correct statement or not?
Well, we have basically four discharge points, you know, and then, like, for example, you have this detention system here, so that's one.
Yep.
Right? Two is what's going out to near water.
Correct.
Three is what already goes out to pasture.
Correct.
All right, and then four is our new system here.
Great.
Right? The discharge from your first system here, though, whatever overflows out of it, right? So you'll see the outflow here, that does go out to pasture.
At what point in time? On a big 25-year storm or a 50-year storm?
Well, you can see that it's for all storms, but it's reduced. You'll see here, you have like almost five CFS, cubic feet per second, going into the system for a 25-year storm event. And what comes out of it is about two CFS.
But doesn't, when the water goes into the red tank, doesn't it go into the ground underneath the red tank?
Well, right, exactly. And that's how it gets reduced because there's a, right? So there you have a loss of like, for the 25-year, you're going from five to two, say, rounding out. So three CFS is going into the ground, right? That's how you lose that three CFS.
And how deep is that red tank, any idea?
That.
Is it one foot deep? Is it six feet deep?
No, it's on the order of six to eight feet deep. We actually have the calculations in the report. I don't recall exactly what that depth is.
So it holds a lot of water?
Yeah, yeah, it holds it. And these are large drywells. They're concrete structures, you know what a drywell is. There's, I think, six of them kind of placed in the same stone envelope.
So that eight, six or eight-foot-deep drywell is holding a lot of water that's going to the ground underneath it.
Right.
It's not coming up and going over to pasture lane.
That's correct.
Now then, talk about the light green, the grass field where my kids used to play softball.
Okay, all right, so.
I just have a hard time trying to understand that that water on the softball field doesn't go into the softball field and it goes over to pasture lane.
Right, okay, so what happens is, you know, in large storm events where the ground becomes saturated, you start to get the runoff. It follows the contours, so basically, a drop of rain would fall parallel, follow the contours parallel. It would be picked up by the drains over here, right? There are some existing drains down here, you can see one in here.
Those, you and I walked those together.
Right, yeah.
And I repadded like 10 of them.
Right, exactly. So there's a whole series of drains behind the school here, right, in that asphalt area. And what those pick up are obviously what's, you know, the pavement that we walked across. Also, the field itself, right, because the field is pitched in that direction, right? Now, it takes the field water longer yet there, right? And you might not see it as much as you would the runoff on the pavement, but it does get there. It just takes longer.
Okay, and then the other light green on the other side of the blue?
Okay, so this area, right, what we've done here, don't forget, this is showing proposed conditions. We're regrading part of this area here where the existing play area extends pretty far back towards the wall, right? We've regraded that towards the building, and we have a swale between the playground and the building. We have a little grassed area there. And what that does, that swale intercepts the runoff from the play area as well as anything flowing across that play area. So that would be the field to the west. And that swale directs it into a catch basin here. And then it's sent into the pipe network that contributes to the, that contributes to the chamber system.
Okay, and then the green grass above the new chamber system, that light green, tell me about that.
Right, in that case.
Is there a berm or a swale between your, the school property line and those three neighbors that live along that border?
Right, yeah, if you look along the fence line, there is a little bit of a berm there. And what we're trying to do is actually try to accent that a little bit, you know? We want to create a swale there to better manage the flow and direct it into catch basins. You'll see we have two catch basins here, one here and one here, which will be at the base of that swale. And that swale is going to be, is pulled away from the trees, obviously, because we want to maintain those trees. So that, you know, sits as a depression. So if you're walking towards the fence from the school, you'd walk down a little bit, and then you come up to the fence.
And then where's the water go when it gets inside that swale or depression?
Okay, and once it gets inside the swale, it then goes out to pasture lane.
Is there, there's an open manhole there? There was when we were there, but there's.
Right, yeah, what we're doing is, we're converting that manhole, we're actually replacing it with that open structure with a manhole, with a new manhole.
All right, go back to slide number six again, which is the plane revisions high-level overflow near pasture lane.
Okay.
Bingo. So my quick math is that this new tank that you're building holds 92,109 gallons of water, okay?
Yeah.
It's simple math.
Right, yeah, that sounds about right.
So when that thing fills up to the top, is that where it goes directly into near water lane? That's the red?
Right, so this, yeah, so this would have to fill to about four inches from the top. Because we have a four-inch pipe going out, and obviously, we have to be four inches down from the very top of the structure to get out of there. So basically, yeah, this will start to spill out when it gets to four, within four inches of the top of that chamber.
And instead of going into pasture lane, it's going into near water lane?
Initially, it will go out to pasture. But as it builds up in here, once you get somewhere between a 25 and a 50, it'll start to spill out towards near water.
So it's not going to flood pasture, it's going to flood near water?
It, well, it'll flow in both directions, right? Yeah, it will flow in both directions, but the other thing to keep in mind is, this system.
My goal is to get it into the street as fast as possible, not into this guy's, this neighbor's yard.
Right, and what we've shown is, we're reducing the flow going in that direction, right? By two things, by sending some to near water and also by infiltrating with the chamber system.
Okay, my goal is to have everyone understand what is going on.
But the low flow from the chamber system does go into pasture.
That's correct, right, and that's a function of the pasture lane system being lower, right?
Right, just elevation.
Yeah, the elevation of the pipes, yeah.
But what I'm trying to, making sure I'm struggling with, it's not true, and I've said it a million times, but it's not 100% right. This chamber system is not a bathtub, okay? So if it was a bathtub and you drained the bathtub, it goes into a pipe and it goes out to pasture lane. That's not necessarily the case. Doesn't it go into the ground first?
Right, it'll go, yeah, definitely, it goes into the ground first. Everything that this, everything that we saw in blue, right, for a 25-year storm, is going into the ground.
So I got 92,109 gallons of water.
Right.
It's going to go into the ground underneath the chamber system.
Before it starts to go.
Right, right.
Great, that's the goal?
That's the goal.
Well, it would fill up, it'd start draining before it fills all the way up, right? Because it can't seep into the ground that quickly.
Well, the traction rate, you know, is 11 inches an hour, which is pretty fast. You know, all this design was based on a rate that's half of that, so just keep that in mind. Yeah, so as it fills up, right, it's constantly going to be sinking into the ground. But at a certain point, you know, once you get beyond the, it might even happen like short of a 25, right? What'll happen is.
The ground gets up.
It's going to start to fill faster than, right? But the 25 can keep up with that, but once you get beyond the 25, what's going to happen is the incoming flow is going to be faster than it could go down in the ground, so it goes out, right?
And how quickly does it go out the low flow before it starts filling up and starts coming out the high flow to near water?
Let's see, well, it doesn't go into the low flow until you get above the 25-year, right? And then, just because of the hydraulics of pasture lane, right, what we did was, we assumed that, analyzing the pipe going out to pasture lane, that the tailwater, so what you're pushing against, is the top of the grate, right? So that was a pretty conservative analysis in itself. And what that showed is, it would go pretty quickly to near water, right? Because that manhole would, you know, be backwatered.
It'd fill pretty quick.
Over, right, and that was the other thing also we had to be careful of, was making sure that keeping this pipe coming out of the chamber system high enough so that we didn't get any backwater effects from near water or from pasture.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Just for reference, a 25-year storm, in comparison to an average rainy day in July where we get a quarter of an inch of rain over a day, so not a real rapid quarter inch in a half an hour type of tons of runoff. But over the course of a whole day, what is a 25-year storm, just for reference? Because what I'm hearing you say is, 25-year storm, nothing goes out of this chamber system down to pasture. So just to, so we have an idea of what is a 25-year storm?
Like, how many inches?
Yeah.
When you're watching TV, the way to go, oh, it rained two inches today.
Right, so it's about five and a half inches or so.
Five and a half?
Over a day?
Over a 24-hour period.
Okay, so that's a pretty substantial storm.
Right, exactly.
So on an average rainy day in April, this is not going to dump into pasture lane. The chamber system.
Right, the chamber system.
The chamber system, the other runoff will.
Other runoff will, right, but the new portion of the school, the addition, the courtyard, the playground, all the stuff that, you know, is basically new, right, will not go to pasture lane.
And right now, it does.
And right now, it does, right, because there's that playground back there. And right now, it does, right? Because there's that playground back there.
But when this thing drains out, again, going to my bathtub analogy, when this thing drains out, you're not sending ninety-two thousand gallons of water through that pipe that goes to that guy's house, right?
No, we're not, no. Right? Because it goes into the ground and it, you know, starts to disperse. So replicates the natural hydrologic cycle. But, yeah, so, right, yeah, so whatever's, you know, whatever's captured by this, right, you know, it'll go to the ground first, right? And then through the twenty-five-year storm. And then, once you get beyond the twenty-five, once you get past that five and a half inches or so, that's when you start to see that spill out towards pasture and towards near water.
How many five and a half inch plus storms have we had in Derry in the last couple of years?
Uh...
You asked the same question to Craig Flaherty.
Yeah, I would say, you know, you might get, there's a four, well, let me put it in this perspective. There's a four percent chance of it happening in any given year, right? But that doesn't mean you won't have two twenty-five-year storms in one year. So, you know, I would say maybe one to two, you know, in a half a year.
George?
Uh, I just wanted to pick up your comment that this doesn't still quite resolve the neighbor's concern. I understand you're improving it, but why don't you describe what you think would be the ongoing concern?
Okay, well, the ongoing concern is, it seems to me that, you know, the, the pipe system, if I, let me go to that slide here. I'm regretting making these bullet points come up one by one.
Page sixteen.
Yeah. Okay. So downstream network. So I think what's, a couple of things that are happening here, right? There's a very large drainage system that comes into this pipe system. So I think, and don't forget, this system, you know, one of the documents was from nineteen forty-nine. So if you look at how precipitation patterns have changed since nineteen forty-nine, they, they've obviously gotten more intense, right? So it might have been a good design for what was here back in nineteen forty-nine. It might have served the area well. But as things developed, right, you know, there was more runoff, you know, because more pavement, more runoff. So I think, you know, this whole system down here is probably undersized. Well, not probably, it is, based on some of the calculations that we've done. There's some pretty strong indications of that, you know, it is undersized. So I think that is one of the primary issues here.
That's because it's eight inches, I think you said, the, an eight-inch pipe coming in.
No, it's, it's a tall inch, but it's an eight-foot wide easement, eight-foot wide easement.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Does all the water that go into pasture lane eventually get to near water?
Yes, it, yes, it does. So what you have here is a pasture lane, again, east is this way. There's a drainage system on the far eastern leg of it here that goes cross-country towards nine pasture lane. You've got Henley School, which goes cross-country between thirty-eight near water and, I believe, seven pasture. And you also have the main leg in near water lane, right? So when it comes together down here, it goes down the road, passes Nickerson, and then there's a little arm of Holly Pond that discharges into north of Juniper Road.
I, I know it's not your job, but does the capacity of near water get larger after that T junction, when it gets further?
Well, it, it does, right, in terms of just raw pipe size?
Yeah.
Right? It goes from, you've got two twelves, right? They converge and they, we're going to an eighteen inch.
Okay, so it does, that's why the capacity can't go at the top into near water, because the pipe from the school to that junction is smaller.
Right, exactly, right. Yeah, so near water's a twelve going out to that junction point. The pasture cross-country is, they're all twelve-inch going to that junction point.
What's RCPME?
Re- reinforced concrete pipe.
Pretty much.
Okay. And there's, there's also some wetland area in between here as well, between near water and pasture and the backs of the residential homes there.
Are you good so far?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mike?
That wetlands is interesting. So one of the comments was they didn't, they wanted water to discharge into those wetlands.
Right.
Or to utilize those wetlands. Is that not being, I mean, that's all hard piped in there, right?
Uh, from what I understand, and I haven't been back there, there are, there are structures that it bubbles up through.
Okay.
Right? Which provides hydration to those wetlands, in addition to, you know, what you get from overland flow and things like that.
Okay. And then the obstruction in the pipe?
Mm-hmm.
What, where approximately is it and, and what do we think is going on there?
Okay. So it's on, it's on, my understanding is that's on the far part of four pasture.
Okay.
Right? I, I believe it's halfway down. I, I don't know exactly, you know, where it is horizontally. But the issue seems, there, there seems to be a structure there that's obstructed. So Board of Ed is facilities, is working to get in there to clean it out, but they have to go through their call before you did clearance to get there. So, and I think, you know, some of the videos that the neighbor shared, there was quite a bit of overflow, you know, even from a, you know, a typical rainy day in July. And I think, you know, what appears to me what's happening there, based on, you know, seeing these things in other places, is that there's probably a very small amount of water that's getting through that pipe, just the way it's obstructed. And because the water can't get through there, it's actually bubbling up through the basins on the south side of Henley. So it's coming out of the basins because it has nowhere else to go. And these basins are the next lowest point on the line. So it bubbles out of there and then it flows overland. And you can actually see where it's gone. It's created a little path there towards two and four pasture.
And so you think that obstruction is contributing to that?
Yeah, it's, right, it's certainly, yeah, it's certainly not helping, right.
And that's, that, the plan is to correct that?
Right, exactly, to remove that and get that pipe in, working water again.
Well, the, the neighbor sent in a picture of some kind of tree trunk, or it's tree stump taken out of one of those things.
Right, yeah, yeah, there's roots, yeah, it's, uh...
There's more than just that?
I, from what I heard, there's also some cobbles.
What's a cobble?
A large stone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whose job is it to maintain that pipe?
Well, I haven't read the easement language myself.
Just show it to her on the record.
Uh, but my understanding...
Does Board of Ed go all the way to the end of four and then DPW takes it from there?
Right, yeah.
Who shared, like, was there? If one had to put in a maintenance plan, who do we address it to?
Right. So right now, it looks like the Board of Ed is responsible for that, right? Then DPW picks up within the right-of-way at pasture lane.
I see. So basically, through four is Board of Ed and then after that is DPW.
Right.
The, the, the house on the corner of near water, are they, I wanna see what's the, the northwest corners?
Northwest corner?
That's four?
Yeah, this, uh, this is two, that's four, right? So those are the two immediately south of Henley. And then across the street from pasture, across from number two pasture is thirty-eight near water.
Right, I don't know.
And thirty-eight is the undocumented?
Right, yeah, that's where the undocumented, undocumented piece of that starts. It's, well, I don't wanna say undocumented, because there's some evidence, but it's not really clear. If there's an easement, there's documentation of the pipe, I should, but no documentation of ownership or easement rates.
So, hold on one second. So on page one, where you say the Board of Ed is cleaning pipes in its drainage easement, that's, which pipe are you talking about?
It's on four.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, that would, that would be on its easement here. That goes across number four.
So that's from the border of the school?
From the, from the south end of Henley to pasture lane.
Okay, they're in the process of cleaning that?
Uh, they, they've started it, right? They, they can't go further.
The guy, I think, who owns the house is here, so he'll tell you if they were, if he was there or not. He'll tell you if they were there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, a question for Jeremy. I mean, how does, how does that work with a, with an easement that isn't necessarily documented? I mean, can, can they continue to use that as part of their drainage plan? Or is that just a private issue between neighbors?
Yeah, my belief is, and again, I'm not the town attorney, but my belief is they can continue to, they maintain it for many, many years. Probably not as well as they should, but they have been maintaining it.
Are we doing a drainage maintenance plan for this thing?
I did speak to Joe about future maintenance and making sure that's docu, can you talk a little bit about that going forward?
Because we have to hold the town to a higher standard than any, you know, control level.
Agreed, yeah. And, yeah, and, yeah, probably, you know, I would say it hasn't been maintained as it should, it should be. So we do have a maintenance plan in our engineering report, which I'll need to expand, because the maintenance plan really focuses on the onsite structures, the catch basins, the infiltration chambers, you know, gives quarterly, you know, inspection requirements, things like that, maintenance logs. It'll need to be expanded to include maintenance of that twelve-inch pipe. You know, they, they video it every year and take a look at it and see, you know, is there an accumulation of debris? And if there is, right, you know, if it happens year after year after year, then they need to go back and see what's causing this.
Okay, just for the record, I don't think that pipe is straight. I think it curves.
Okay, and that could, this was, I got this diagrammatically from Town Records. So that's one of the things that we will get through this process, is to identify where that root is, pinpoint it.
My only last thing is a clarification. I just wanna make sure, when you're talking about discharge to pasture, you're talking about discharge through the pipe, and when you're talking about discharge to near water, you're talking about discharge through the pipe to near water.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. You good, Jeff?
[coughs]
All right, what do we want to do here from the peer reviewer next?
Okay, well, we still have a little tiny bit of our presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, good.
Which I'll play landscape architect for a very short while. Yeah, zoom through this. All right, okay. So what you see on the screen here, existing site plan rendered by our landscape architect. Here is the proposed, existing trees are removed, twenty. We're proposing forty-one trees. So it's an increase of twenty-one trees over what's there now. Just to give you a flavor of some of the new features at the entry, new street trees, you know, enhanced paving at the entrance, some boulder seeding, and then some enhanced planting. And all this will be vetted before the ARB at its upcoming meeting. And I believe we also have a little bit more detail on the front entry, the old entry on, off near water, some stone slab benches, as well as some special paving to kind of mimic what's going on at the north entry. And then we also have our courtyard area, which includes a wooden performance stage, you know, some playful elements, as well as multi-colored resilient surface there, as well as some amphitheaters seating to allow for outdoor classroom education. And again, elsewhere on the campus, new trees, some gathering benches outside this way, new way here. And some playful seating just outside the playground here, some playground games there, as well as some additional other seating out there. And relocated playground. This is the site logistics plan. I think this is where I'm supposed to start, stop, and Eric's supposed to pick up.
Just briefly, we, we have four site logistic plans here. So in yellow is the construction zone. So this is the summer of twenty-three. So this is the first summer. In the first summer, our construction access is in the bottom right corner, directly off in near water. Everything that's in yellow would be part of a construction site and construction fence. Currently, we are proposing to relocate the modulators that are within that yellow zone to where you can see those three sort of turquoise boxes. And we're also relocating the, the playground from within that construction zone to the purple area, which is on one of the ball fields. Also part of this first area of construction, on the far left, on the northern end of the site there, you can see that that's where the basketball court is, that that's gonna be parking, as well as we're gonna be developing that egress directly onto Post Road. The one last aspect of this has to do, on the, the bottom or the, the west side of the campus, you can see a dash green line. That's some trenching for electrical work that's planned for the project. During the school year, between twenty-three and twenty-four school year, in yellow again is the construction zone. You can see in orange, that's where the planned new construction is for the addition. In blue, you can see some dashed lines and a detention basin that's up by the southeast corner of the site.
Is that temporary?
I'm sorry?
Is that a temporary detention basin?
That's a temporary detention basin.
There you go.
For the second summer, summer twenty-four, the construction fence changes to the west side, where we tear, take down the existing library and we do the expansion of the bus loop. At that point, there's still some addition, some work on, on the addition, as well as some interior work. You can see here that we've relocated the playground back to its existing location. And then finally, during the school year of twenty-four, twenty-five, it's, it's primary, just primarily just interior work associated with finishing off mechanical systems and other systems that we're doing within the building.
So your summer periods, half of June, July, half of August? So it's like...
Oh, of August. So two and a half months.
So phase one's technically, you know, two and a half, three months?
Correct.
And then the school year's like nine months?
Nine, nine and a half months.
Okay. Pretty straightforward, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, so for the record, Craig Yanis, the Time Bond Project Manager, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm just gonna briefly go over the peer review comments for the traffic that were provided on November fourteenth and then earlier today. First set of comments was on the traffic volumes and analyses. They were acceptable. The next comment was about the intersection site distance of the new driveway. We did review that and the site distance is acceptable. It extends through the signalized intersection at near water lane. It's not blocked by any existing or proposed vegetation or signage. We also added no stopping any time signage on the south side of Post Road to make sure that vehicles don't stop there to pick up or drop off passengers and also to clear the sideline. The next comment was about field observations. The ones noted in the letter are the same or similar to what we found in the field. Again, there was noted that parents were picking up and dropping off in that area on the Post Road. Our goal with the revisions to circulation, we added driveway, the signage, is to encourage people to use the, the drop-off loop as, as intended. There we continue to be people reminded out there to go to the loop. And then finally, for the site plan, they wanted a little bit more detail for signage and striping. That's been added to the plan, including the crosswalk across the new driveway, which relocated the stop bar back, added a stop sign, the no-stopping any time signage that I mentioned along the Post Road. And then finally, we also want to mention that the median is within the Post Road between the travel lanes. And that's, that's proposed for vehicular and pedestrian safety. There's the crossing there, the mid-block crossing. And we want to make sure vehicles come out of the driveway and make a right. This whole layout's been initially discussed with the DOT and the operations of Post Road as well. And we'll continue that through the encroachment permit process following this town review process. And so that pretty much wraps it up. I think we're, we're in line with all the comments and everything should be addressed. That's it.
Is Craig, are you over here?
He is, yeah.
Okay. So, so you're saying that people drop off their kids, like, near, on the Post Road, near the basketball court and then they run to school?
Yep. It's, it's rare, but it does happen.
Yeah?
Yes.
Do I camp in summer, so I drop like it off?
Do.
We observed it, according to what was written in the letter and Greg can comment. They did not see it, but the crossing guard did mention that it does happen.
Okay.
You walk in that gate right there.
Right, there's a gate right there.
Yeah.
You did, when you had Henley happening.
Yep, you walk in right there.
Okay.
And the other change, too, is that we're, we're now putting a sidewalk directly from the signal, where people are, where the kids are supposed to cross is at the signal, which is safer than the crossing now, not the beacon. We're putting a new pedestrian path directly from that signal to the front door. So that promotes the pedestrian movement away from that gate.
And then, just to correct my memory, because I remember this, you're putting a physical asphalt median in the middle of the Post Road, so if people come out of the school, they can't go straight because they'll hit the medium, they have to go right. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it's, right now, it's a painted median, so it is a median that you're not supposed to cross, double yellow lines on either side. This just reinforces the existing condition and makes sure that people don't make that left turn, because signs and pavement markings don't, aren't always effective.
And Greg's gonna talk about that, I think, when he gets up here, but that, you still need state approval for that?
That's correct. So it, the normal process is, we get approval from the local board and then we go to the state, do the encroachment permit to construct within the right-of-way, so they get a full shot of review. We have reviewed this with them. And so we're, we're still in discussions about what to do there. We think, I think, as a, as a traffic engineer for this project, that we should try to move forward with the, the median and see what the state says about that.
But we're not the board, you're going to the local, the local traffic authority, right?
That'll be, they'll be, they'll, they won't necessarily be involved, because it's directly with the state facility. If, if the town itself, the local traffic authority was proposing something, they would go to the town. But because this is an approved project, where we're constructing in the right-of-way... But because this is an approved project where we're constructing in the right-of-way, we'll involve them, but they don't necessarily have an approval of the board, per se. It's a state approval that you need.
I'd keep the police in the loop.
Yeah. I don't think they would, they would argue with it being safer, but yes, we always do that anyway. They're part of the process.
Anything else for us? Thank you.
That completes the Henley part of the presentation. So if you have other questions?
Okay. We'll get right into the peer reviewers. I think it's time for Craig Flaherty, right? Craig Flaherty. Now, we got your letter, too.
Good.
Craig, I think they put the microphone on the... Thank you.
Anything for you, Bob?
Thank you.
I guess this didn't work with the screen, huh? No? Good evening. My name is Craig Flaherty. I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I am a senior engineer and principal with the land use consulting firm Redness &amp; Mead, with offices in Stanford and Wilton. Redness &amp; Mead has been hired by the planning and zoning department to provide drainage peer review services for the Henley School. Zoning application, specifically, our task is to compare the proposed design and supporting calculations with the requirements of your zoning regulations as spelled out in Section 880 having to do with stormwater mitigation. So we received all the plans and reports shortly after submission on October 24th of last year. Attended the first public session on November 15th to view the presentation and listen to neighbor comment. We issued our first round of revision requests and information requests on November 16th. There were 15 different requests concerning the original design of the system. In the subsequent weeks following that letter, we had an opportunity to tour the site, and we received a revised design and report on January 5th of last week. We again went through those plans and calculations thoroughly and issued our follow-up letter on January 9th. And we found, given the substantial revision, which aligns with the presentation that Mr. Canis just provided, to be consistent with, if not beyond, the requirements of your zoning regulations as enumerated in Section 880. I'm going to give you a couple of numbers to clarify some of the questions you had in the prior presentation. The first is 30% and 95%. So roughly, roughly, and the calculations are actually more nuanced in this, but roughly, when you're dealing with a vegetated area, about 30% of the water that falls on it in these heavy rainfall events runs off, and 70% soaks into the ground. 95% plus is, if you were dealing with a hardscape area or a landscape area, you would have 95% of the rainfall runoff. And the few leftover percent is just abstraction, evaporation, and that sort of thing.
So that relates, you relate to like the soccer field?
Yeah, your question about the ball fields.
Right.
The second set of numbers is 43 and 46. So you recall during Mr. Canis's presentation, the bottom of the chamber system that is being proposed is at elevate, the bottom of the stone of that system is at elevation 43. The low overflow, the first way for water to get out of that system is actually at elevation 46. So the first three feet of water will always be retained versus detained, and that's the portion that soaks into the ground before water starts coming out at elevation 46. The other number is six inches and 12 inches. The low-flow outlet then above elevation 46 is, which heads towards pasture lane, is six inches in size. The high-flow overflow, which heads towards near water, is at a higher elevation, but it is 12 inches in size. And the relationship of area to diameter is exponential, not linear. So it's actually about four times larger in terms of trying to get that overflow water out to near water lane quicker. In my estimation, this application process, your regulation, the public comment process, the public scrutiny provided by the public hearing, the peer review process have all worked in the favor of getting something better than a status quo done. You'll recall that at a base level, this is not about an increase of hardscape or an increase in impervious coverage. It's effectively the same existing to proposed. So if they did nothing, and it was 13 years ago, they could come to you and say, "We're not making anything worse," and walk out the door without doing much. But you see the extents that they have gone to to mitigate and reduce the flooding impacts that are occurring downstream. A 25% reduction in peak and volume through the 50-year storm is no small thing, given the other constraints that Mr. Canis represented. We did still have some minor comments. One is really just a reference note on one of the sheets that's still talking about the surface basin. Of course, that's been replaced with this infiltration system. The more substantive comment has to do with construction logistics and whether or not a temporary sediment trap can be avoided. You recall that a portion of that light green area and the overflow from that dark green area ultimately get piped, hard-piped, to the pipe that goes through down to pasture lane. And all that water predominantly, except for the driveway out to the Post Road, is going to stay clean water during construction, not disturbed earth. And it needs to get piped around the proposed foundation of the new addition and piped around where they're going to have to dig for that infiltration system. So we are suggesting, and this is the references in our comment on page four of five of our letter, that that bypass be built first. And we think they have to do it anyway. It's just that they haven't necessarily looked at the construction logistics at that granular level. So if the bypass around the foundation area is built first, and the high overflow connection to near water is built first, there will be some immediate protection for neighbors during construction without the need to consolidate water in a sediment trap. So we'd prefer more diffuse sediment erosion control method, just some conservative double rows of silt vents and hay bales surrounding the catch basins that end up collecting the water and getting into that pipe. So that's the nature of our comments. And we believe that that sort of detail can be worked out by the project engineer between now and when a zoning permit is requested.
You're talking about comment, it's enumerated like 8J or something like that? With this thing?
Yeah, JK, yes, J and K. J, yeah, mostly J, yep. One J.
Okay. I didn't know before when Joe said, that temporary retention pond, has that got to do with anything you're talking about here?
It might be the same thing in the construction logistics plans that quickly indicated. And that would be the thing that I'm asking them to take a little bit of granular, more granular look at in terms of the sequence of phasing and what has to be done first.
Okay. Hopefully, you can answer. I meant to ask this earlier. This new detention system, the chamber system, how far off is it off of the property line? Can you reanswer that?
Joe's going to have to answer that question for you.
You could ask, you could ask, I don't want to make sure we know how far it is. Because the last, the swimming pond was right on the property line. What? It was the swimming pond?
Just bear with me a minute. Cycle all the way back through here. And again, Larry, Eric, and Joe, it's Mr. Canis.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll see here, this dotted line here, that is your building setback line. So that's 25 feet for the zone. And you can see the edge of our chamber system actually sits inside the site further away from that. So the actual distance is probably on the order of 30 to 35 feet from the property line.
Really?
Right.
No. No, that's...
No.
Yeah, Joey.
Which side, Joe? At the closest point, I think, what Steve's talking about.
Yeah, no, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you talking about the chamber system or the pipe itself?
The chamber system.
Okay, so the chamber system, which is right here.
Right.
That's the south edge of it. This dotted line is your 25-foot setback from the property line for building. Right, and you can see the edge of our chamber system is actually inside the site. It's further in than that 25-foot setback line.
I see what you're talking about. If you look at page four of this thing.
Yeah, so it's actually on the order of 30 to 35 feet away.
30 to 35 feet. Yeah, because there's, on the landscaping plan, it shows there's a row of trees there that you're showing tree protection around.
Right.
Right, because that's the...
Right, because it's important to us that we protect those trees. But it is 30 to 35 feet.
Yeah, I'm looking at page C10301. And I got the distance. Okay. So it's that, that chamber system is somewhere around 25 feet off the property line? We're getting a lot of heads going, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Craig Flaherty from the commission? All right. You're good, Craig. Anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay. I think Greg Del Rio's going to read next. Yeah. Okay. We have your letter, too, Greg, from today. Yeah, we got it at 4:53 or something like that. Thank you for getting it in.
Good evening. Greg Del Rio, professional engineer, state of Connecticut. Principal transportation engineer for Harrison and Hanover, offices in Norwalk and New Haven. So yes, we received the responses from our first set of comments and the first submission. And as Craig summarized earlier, I don't know if you want to switch the slides back to the traffic slide, but we concur with everything that Craig had mentioned. With the, basically focusing on most of the issues with the encroachment onto Post Road. Just, you know, for a little bit of background, you know, they, the exit is a right, right turn only. So that's why we try and do, when I say we, the traffic engineers and the community, the local municipal engineers, Connecticut DOT, as much as possible, we try to physically block that left turn from happening when we want to have just right turns because we all know what happens if you don't do that. You just have a sign, there's no left turn. So we have the deflection to the right, and you have the median treatment in there. And the median treatment, you know, not only, you know, helps stop the left turns, but it also provides some refuge and some safety aspects for the pedestrians crossing the street. So it's all improvements. There's a slight concern about the queuing that sometimes occurs northbound. So at the signal, when they continue to work with Connecticut DOT, they'll see if there's, you know, there might be a slight signal modification required at this, at the signal to give a little more time for the left turn movements. But other than that, you know, everything seems to be, you know, we concur with all the operations and the improvements, and it should work. And it's all improvements, as well as the no-stopping on Post Road itself.
Okay. Is there going to be a median on, inside the property? Like, you ever go up to Trader Joe's, they had the same issue with Trader Joe's, where it's left turn only? There's a median, there's a median in the parking lot where you can't go...
That's probably a right turn in and a right turn out, right?
That's right.
And you put the splitter island, is what you're talking about? In this case, you don't have the in, so there's no need for that splitter island that you're, that median you're talking about.
The driver's angle.
Right, right. You know, if you had the right turn going in, then you would have that little triangle piece in between. But that's not necessary because there's no entrance.
Okay. Any questions for Greg? And remember, we're moving the driveway, the bus loop driveway down, so the queuing gets longer the bus...
Right, and that we spoke about the first time, and that works.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we only saw, I think, one or two buses on the street.
From the commission, any questions on the landscaping plan? Nope? Lovely. And then what was the other thing that he did landscaping plan, then went right into traffic? And then we're, so I think we're at the point of public comment, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak to this application? We did get a letter, yes. Mr. Bora, please. We got a letter from the record, from Mr. Bora. It was emailed to everybody on Friday. There was also a video attached to it, and he also dropped off a flash drive at my house and a flash drive at Town Hall.
Correct.
Of the pictures. Mr. Bora, welcome.
And we tie in bond, too. My name again is Doug Bora. I live at 38 Near Water Lane, which is on the southeast corner of pasture lane. And I thank you very much for your time and attention. I appreciate the HHR committees listening to us, the Planning and Zoning Commission listening to us, and tie and bond listening to us, too. Thank you very much.
Could you spell your last name for including?
B as in boy, O R A.
Thank you.
In the back, we have many neighbors here who are all concerned about this plan. And what I'd like to do is first, take a step back. Certainly, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know, I know one-tenth of what you know. But I want to just use common sense here and take you back to 880. And look at the intent of 880. 880 says, and I'm going to quote, "The intent of stormwater management, Darian, is stipulated, is stormwater management is the practice of controlling the runoff of stormwater." You all know this. "From a site such that the quantity of stormwater flow does not result in cumulative adverse impact on properties proximate to the site, or cause adverse cumulative impact downstream as a result of the proposed development." That's the intent. That's the purpose. That's what we're trying to do. I've heard it said tonight, and I want to challenge that, that this is in compliance with 880. I'm not an expert. I don't believe it is. Continue. Section 881, let me just read. 881E, called Outlet Locations. It states that the runoff from proposed development sites should utilize existing outlets to the maximum extent possible unless it's demonstrated that using existing outlets would exacerbate downstream flooding or result in adverse impacts to downstream properties or properties proximate to the site. This is made in shade for our situation on pasture lane. This is what the intent is, and we're directly damaged by this. And that's why I want to take it back up to a higher level at 880. I don't want to get involved in the math. I certainly can't refute any of your math. It's, I'm sure it's accurate. But I want to take it back to 880. We're downstream. I want to make a couple of comments about that. And maybe you could pull up, while I'm doing that, the downstream drainage network page. I don't know what number it is. Appreciate if you could do that.
I think it's page 16, Joe?
Yeah, I can...
Joe, put it up on this screen.
Yeah.
Thanks, man.
Just excuse my reach while I bring it up here.
Do you want to point out your house and where everything's proximate to?
Almost there. There you go.
So, we all know that you have a 50-year...
That you are, right?
Excuse me?
That's a planned one?
That is it, yes, okay, good. There is a 50-year requirement for flood mitigation. And there's allegations here, there's proposals and recommendations that we size the scope of the downstream runoff wherever it goes to 100-year plan. That's great. But what I think I've heard tonight is that 76%, 74% of the water that is retained on-site, which is going into the cul-de-sac-like chamber system, including, I think Mr. Flaherty said, the light green area and some of the dark green area. A lot of the site goes into the cul-de-sac system, and 74% of it ends up in pasture lane. And 26% goes directly to near water lane. And I thought I heard tonight that said there was an objective of DPW to have Henley provide hydration to wetlands. If you look down here, two parcels south of Henley School is a wetland. And there are three easements. There's the first easement, which has been scoped out. It's going to be remediated. There's a call before you dig guy coming soon. That is clear as a bell.
Which one is that, if you don't mind telling me? Can you point it?
This, I'm going to give you... This, I'm going to give you, in fact, if you would pass this around, you can follow this. There are three easements here. Henley School goes across 2 and 4 Pasture Lane. It's clear as a bell. That is an obligation of the town to maintain, and the town is maintaining it. There are some issues with it, which I will let others address. But there is an easement here. The second easement is on the south side of Pasture Lane. It was incorrectly stated tonight that that easement is on the property that my wife and I own at 38 Nearwater Lane. It's the abutter on 7 Pasture Lane, who is also right here. It's his easement. And that easement is the middle easement. I refer to it in the documents you have there as easement number two. That easement has, it is taken from record in the DPW office, there's a reference to a VCT 12-inch pipe from, I think, 1949, when Henley was just completed. And there is murky ownership of that, and it's not known who owns the pipe and whether the town has the right, but not the obligation, to maintain it. I will tell you that I have lived with my bride in that same house for 34 years, and it has been cleaned once. So the concept of we're doing, the town is maintaining this pipe, easement number two, with its murky ownership, is erroneous. The town has not maintained it. There are roots this big growing in the pipe. It's obsolete, it's crap, it's shot, it's bubbling up. Its deferred maintenance has been going on for 75 years. 75 years. The third easement comes across, when the water comes down through 2 and 4 Pasture Lane, that's the clear easement that's being worked on. Then it goes between 38 Nearwater Lane and 7 Pasture Lane, owner right here. That water bubbles up. Many of you have seen issues with it. It literally bubbles up through the manhole. There's such a huge discharge of water running off from Henley. And it continues down, and there's a third easement that goes 90 degrees directly out to Nearwater Lane. That easement is clear as a bell. It's right in a maintenance by the town. So the town has three easements to take all the downstream drainage under 880. The first one, the town's working on. The second one, they've abandoned for 75 years. The third one, they can't find it. No one's done anything with it, ever. So in any case, it ends up on the same pipe, the 18-inch pipe, I believe it is, on Nearwater Lane. So I believe that the obligation of a pipe, of a property owner in Darien, including the town itself, is to not discharge any water from its site to an abutter site. And that's clearly happening here. It's happening on the abutter site, it's going under Pasture Lane, and it's happening on several sites, even downgrading for that. If you go out to my property today, or any of their properties today, there's standing water. It doesn't dissipate in the ground. It doesn't disappear in 72 hours. It's there. You pick the day of the summer, come over, and you'll see standing water. Some of these folks have little kids. We don't want to have West Nile virus, you know, mosquitoes in our backyards. It's being dumped by the town into EPC-regulated land. I don't know what's right in life, but that's, doesn't seem to be right. So I think when you're taking 74% of the water, discharging it down the old abandoned pipe, and 26% goes to Nearwater, that's not right. I don't think that's what the intention of 880 is. In addition, I want to point out, the original plan of Henley, which if you go to Plan Revision page, maybe, Mr. Canes, could you just take the Plan Revision page?
Sure. Is that the one you wanted, or?
No, there's another one.
Okay. Okay, did it have, like, all text on it, or did it have a diagram on it?
Well, no, a little bit of green and a little bit of blue.
Okay, yeah.
It's like 11, 12, 13.
So, the original plan submitted by Ty and Bond with a detention pump above ground had contributing area specified on that plan of 1.15 acres. I believe what's going on now is there, the nine-and-a-half acre parcel that comprises all of Henley, a chunk of it, two-thirds of it, is going into the detention basin. And of that, you have two pipes coming out. You've got 92, Steve's great at math, 92,000 gallons of water coming out. Most of it sits there, retains. It goes up to a pipe at the top, near the top, and there's two of them. The lower pipe goes out to, guess what? Pasture Lane. The upper pipe, three inches below the top, goes out to Nearwater Lane. The same Nearwater Lane it goes to anyway. So if you have, if you design the building, you have to design it to a 50-year standard. It's designed for 100-year stamp. That is your regulations, which you passed as a body...
May 12, 19, 2009.
Yeah, 2009. You passed a resolution here in November 2009, I believe, to establish a 50-year plan. So if you have, I believe by the testimony today, that the system is designed for 100-year flood, and it gets down to the underground Coltech chamber system, there's a choke point. It's, water will flow to the lowest pipe, it goes out past your lane, that means 100% of the water, 92,000 gallons minus whatever's retained under that pipe, it's still a lot of water, goes out, a 12-inch pipe, it's chock-a-block full of weeds, it's old, it's abandoned, it's cracked, it's bubbling up on our properties, and it dumps onto EPC land. Are you kidding me? That's not the intention of 880. And I think you should look at it that sense. What I would recommend is you have your civil engineers come look at the property. No one's been at the property. Now, math is great. Math doesn't lie, but I think you really need to come look at the property, because it's not permitted under 880. Your regulations, you've passed it, your standards, and you can't have that violated. You're taking water from a property owner and dumping it up on another property owner, and that's, it should go out to Nearwater Lane, right from Henley, because it goes to Nearwater Lane, anyway down the street. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I really, we're very appreciative of the fact that you are listening to us. It makes a world of difference, and I want to thank your chairman for taking time on a rainy weekend to come out and walk the site. I give you great respect for doing that. Thank you, appreciate that. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Doug. Can you just go back, Joe, from the, it's on two more slides after that, where it's a percentage, 72 and 26, that Doug's talking about? Did it, and my question is, did it used to be 100% and now we're splitting it? You just pass that one.
Sure. Again, for the record, Joseph Canes, so under existing conditions, right, what's going to pasture into the, towards that pipe, is everything in green and everything in blue. Right? That all gets there now. So with the proposed system, right, where we're taking, we're taking that blue area and basically putting it into the ground. Right? And as, and then what we're also doing, as the runoff comes out of the chamber system, it goes out towards Nearwater Lane. So for the proposed conditions, right, for the 25-year storm, 70% of the runoff that's generated by the green and the blue areas will go into pasture lane versus 100% of that area goes towards pasture lane today.
That's by 40. So it's, it was 100%, now it's going down to 70%.
Right.
Okay, so on your very last page of your power print, it says peak flow to pasture lane reduced by 22% for the Darien town design.
Right. Right. So this one, right now, so what this, what this does, just to clarify, this is comparison, this takes into account the proposed condition.
Right.
Right? We're seeing about, you know, how we're redistributing the flow. Right? Because right now, it's 100, existing conditions is 100% distribution.
To that pipe.
It breaks, now here, it breaks down to roughly 70, 30. The next slide here is really what shows the improvement, because we're comparing existing conditions to proposed conditions. Right? And you can see our peak flow reductions are 28, 24, 35, you know, across the board there. So there are decrease for all the storm events we're required to analyze, plus the 100-year.
Okay. Would, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Please. No, I was at, on a Sunday, did I cross your property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Nice picture.
Good evening. Steven Gabriel, and I'm the resident of 4 Pasture Lane. So if there's any questions about the pipe, please feel free to ask. Just a brief history, I moved in in September of 2001, you know, soon to find out that I had water flowing across my property from Henley School. And at that time, the property line between 2 and 4 pasture line, lane, was a strip or probably about a dozen 100, 110-foot Norwegian spruce trees. So, and that was basically next to or on this easement, and the pipe was underneath those trees. So when I first inquired, you know, about this flood, and the response I got then from the school is that, well, it's rooted, and you have all these trees, and we can't do anything. Well, you know, so the trees weren't mine, so it's really not my problem, but we still let it go by. So, I mean, I did have a picture, I mean, we didn't show it from 2012 with the flooding, because the amount of water that was coming across the property at that time was significant. I mean, it was probably 30 to 40 feet wide, as deep as six inches of water. And that was coming from the school property across the west side of my property onto pasture lane. So with Superstorm Sandy, we lost most of those trees, in which I contacted the school again. And at that point, since those trees were gone, they quickly came, dug up the existing pipe, put it in a 12-inch pipe. They de-go slightly outside of the easement, simply just to get it done quickly. So it was angled across the back, which would be the northwest corner of my property. So, and even after that pipe was changed in 2012, I continued to have the backup, even with the new pipe, at that point it was clear, backing up all the way to Henley School, up the storm sewer on Henley, behind my property, and continuing to flood over my property onto pasture lane. There was a video supplied from July of this year of the flood happening again. Of course, we all know this past year, we had a significant drought. So the ground was pretty dry, maybe too dry, but the pipe backed up, and of course, we had the water flow across the property. I was contacted, you know, about scoping the pipe. I gave them permission, and today I was contacted in maybe a blockage, and I said, well, you know, do what you have to do and take a look at it. So that's where the pipe on 4 pasture lane stands at this point. My concern now is this water retention system. Probably five, six years ago, I was getting a significant amount of surface water runoff from the fields of Henley, flowing into my backyard. Ground was saturated, we had lots of water, and I was getting a couple inches on the other side of my property in my backyard of just runoff from Henley School. I did have a picture of that, because it was snow-covered, but I haven't been able to find it, and so I haven't been able to supply it. At that time, the school put a berm along the back edge of my property, and probably up to 6 pasture lane also, just to try to keep that water runoff from the fields from entering my property. So we do have a lot of runoff, and of course, I'm at the low point, so that water naturally comes to, you know, my property. So my concern now is that we're going to put this nice water retention system, which will hold it 30 feet from my property line, and now I'm going to have 96,000 gallons and more, because it's going to drain and fall, dumping into the ground, is that, that's what I presume. And I presume if it overflows that, it goes into the drainage systems. Well, I'm downhill of that water retention system. Granted, there's 30 feet, but, you know, my gut feeling is I'm going to be getting wet, my backyard's going to be wet with that water. 96,000 gallons of water is a lot of water to be soaking into the ground. I presume we've got a lot of rock ledge, so I don't think it's going straight down. I believe it's going to go downhill into my backyard. So that's, you know, if I, you know, I would prefer, you know, if you can get that water off-site, instead of having it soak into the ground, we're downhill. I mean, I think that would be a better solution, instead of trying to, you know, soak it into the ground and hopefully, you know, go straight down. But if it can be pumped, or if the water retention system can put somewhere else on the property by using pumps, so that you have a bigger field, maybe further up into the plate, the back field, if we can put back there where there's a bigger buffer, maybe that would be a better solution, whether or not it has to be pumped to do that, or pumped right to Nearwater, or whatever system. But, you know, that's a lot of water to put in that narrow speed, so you have three residential neighbors on this school property, and you're sticking that right behind our houses. So there's some concern there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the time and the effort. It's been a, it's been a long battle.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Please.
Hello? Raphael Bonvillian. That's B-O-N. V as in Victor, I-L-L-I-A-N. And I live at 7 pasture lane.
Is that the new house behind Doug Boras' house?
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, thanks very much for, for taking the time to listen to our comments. It really is appreciated. And I moved here about two years ago from New York City, and, you know, I could go to Henley, loving the town, but certainly encountering some issues with this, with this drainage. So just from a high-level point of view, it seems like a huge part of the drainage management plan rests on this pipe functioning, going down pasture lane. But I think, as you've heard from several of us, that core assumption is just wrong. The pipe does not function properly, and it results in large runoff into the properties, as well as water just bubbling out of the ground into our properties. I'm really not convinced that some cleaning efforts of one single section of that pipe is going to have a significant effect to fix the overall problem. So we do appreciate the town, you know, making those efforts, but I think it's, as been mentioned, hardly been maintained over the year, and is, over the years, and is in very bad shape. The other element, in addition to that, just fundamental flaw of thinking that we can continue to push water down that pipe, which, which doesn't work. I'm really surprised to hear the comment earlier about DPW, or the, or the town wanting to feed wetlands with the school runoff water, and that that water should be bubbling up in people's backyards through these pipes. I don't see how that's possibly justified, to be feeding wetlands with a man-made pipe on private property. I would further note, even in the cases where there is easement, there's nothing in that easement language about bubbling up water to feed wetlands. The easement is for a pipe. It's not for, you know, manholes that water bubbles up far from it. So what's being done in reality back there is far different than what was ever stated in those cases. For me, it's a massive overreach, nothing about it in easement. It's against town regulations, and it's damaging our properties. So in conclusion, it doesn't sound to me like the actual suitability of the pasture drainage in the first place is being addressed in this plan. It's partly possibly reducing some of the runoff to pasture, but it was actually stated by the gentleman that the pasture pipe is an undersized system that maybe was suitable for 1949, but hasn't been maintained and is certainly not functioning for today's conditions. So from my point of view, it's just wrong from a logical point of view, and I think town regulations as well. So thank you very much, and, yeah, hope we can find a resolution.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Please, welcome. Give your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Teresa Boris. That's B-O-R-S. We're not related to the Boris. But we did move in about a year ago from Jersey City, so like we've mentioned, there's a lot of people moving here from the city, and I think it's very important that the town of Darien listens to our concerns.
Are you 2 pasture lane?
2 pasture lane, yes.
2 pasture, okay.
So what I gathered from the existing conditions is that the school drainage wasn't ever set up properly to drain. That's just my conclusion, listening to everyone stating that that wasn't properly set up, right? So it's not about just taking the impervious land and draining that, it's about fixing what was never set up correctly, right? So if there's water issues and drainage issues, yes, the impervious land is important, but there also is the prior land that was never draining, draining correctly. So into pasture, I actually, right now, currently don't have, you know, anything behind my house, but this new pond would sit behind my house. So, into pasture, I actually, right now, currently don't have, you know, anything behind my house, but this new pond would sit behind my house. And that situation, I think, would also cause additional water to come in our backyard. So that's a very big concern. My question, or my statement, is could this pond be somewhere else? There is something underneath the front parking lot, so why couldn't this pond go where the basketball court is? Why couldn't this pond, this underground pond, live somewhere else? Why does it have to live in my backyard, right? Could we explore that? The other comment that I thought was interesting was, someone mentioned that there was a pipe that needed to be on an angle for the water to flow. So it's very common to add a pump. Did anyone look into a pump if it's not at the correct angle to, to bypass the near water? Could we look into a pump system that could pump the water from the underground pond to near water, not to pasture lane? Understand the angles, understand that water needs to flow on an angle, but it seems to me, and I've talked to numerous people in development, that there could be a common pump that just goes to near water and doesn't go to pasture lane. So that's just my ask and my comments on the water situation. There was another section that we really didn't address, so being on the corner of two pasture lane and near water, there will be a bus lane, and that bus lane gets a lot closer to my house. There are children, I see them every morning, they jump over the wall, they walk to the school. I would encourage people to maybe come by and see, see how kids actually enter Henley from the south, and I don't think that traffic, like, I don't think we're thinking about how do children who walk from the neighborhood enter Henley from the south side. We keep talking about post-road, and that's fantastic, because I do think, you know, we need to talk about that, but no one's talking about the south and the children and the safety issues with buses coming in. So two things I want to ask about the bus lane is, when children enter, for example, can we look at adding across another cross guard, right? Because there are going to be people crossing over from the south, and it's a very dangerous area, can we look into that? And then the second piece is with the noise. Now that buses are going to be, you know, 20 feet away from my property line, I'm going to hear noises, I'm going to hear buses, and I would like reinforcement of landscape so that we're not hearing those buses every morning, because it's, it's probably moving a good maybe 100, maybe 150 feet closer to my property line. It's very, it's becoming very close, so I'd like to look into that. And I think, I think that was my last point. So, you know, we're really enjoying Darien, we like it as a community, so hopefully this isn't all me just complaining, but I do want to say, like, as a new property owner in the terr, the Town of Darien, I really think that we do need to look out for children's safety, we do need to look out for, for people who are moving to the area and who are really coming here and investing money in real estate, and I hope that you all take these, you know, take these topics and these points under consideration. Thank you.
Next?
I'll be brief.
Thank you. Just your name and address, please.
Tom Ross, nine pasture lane.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Ross, R-O-S-S.
Thank you.
I think you spoke at the last minute, too.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a lot more to add, I think it's pretty obvious here. A couple of things. When the water goes into the water containment system, it bubbles up pretty quickly to six inches, and then it drains to pasture lane. Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, I don't think we're solving the problem. I'd rather see it first go to near water, and then go to pasture lane, so change those around. I think that would be a better solution, certainly for us. Also, I'd like to say that, you know, do you guys understand what happens when the water comes across the pipe on four pasture lane and goes to between 38 and nine, and then the next one across my property, which is seven? Do you understand that the water stops there? It appears to stop there, and it probably stops there because this system was built 70 years ago. Do you realize who was president then? Harvey Truman. I mean, we're talking about a system that is very, very old. Okay, the, the population of Darien was 11,000, and it's now 22,000. Henley School has been expanded multiple times. We have a system there that doesn't work. Now, who's going to address that issue? Okay, so you have water still coming to pasture lane, and the gentleman here didn't give us a solution. Okay, so I, I don't understand, what is the solution to that problem? In fact, at four pasture lane, when the water comes through there, it stops, it can't get through the system at, at nine to 38, so it goes back to Henley and bubbles up again. So if you clean the pipe on four, what have you done? Have you solved the problem? So how do we solve that problem?
That's what we're here for.
Okay, I'd like to say solved.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this application? All right, Joe, you're in the hot seat, man. In, in terms of location of the, of the Coltech system, did you, just to answer the one woman's question, did you research any other areas on the 9.6 acre campus?
Again, for the record, Joseph Canis, let me go back to a diagram, because those are always a speak, easy to speak from. So the Coltech system is here, right? And you have to look at where it's receiving runoff, right? It's receiving runoff from this blue area, right? That's the area that we really want to focus on, because that's where our most intense impervious coverage is. And stormwater systems run by gravity, right? So you want to be lower on the site than the area that you're developing, which is why this system is here, that's why it's located in that area there. If we, there, if we located other, elsewhere on the site, you know, further up in the field here, we would actually be higher than the outlet pipes coming from the building. So unfortunately, just because of where the addition is, is where, that's why the Coltech system is where it is proposed.
Could you perhaps put it in the bus loop?
The bus loop is actually higher, because what happens is, right, the site kind of drains towards the center, and then towards the south. So the elevations here, I believe they're 55, 56, 55, in the 50s, whereas this is, we said was 49.
And then, so that's that question. Then, go back to the, the DPW stuff, because I, I understand that Ed Gentile, who's in charge of DPW, did not want 100% of the water going into, into near water lane immediately. That's why they want to keep using the pasture lane easement. Can you just explain the, the, the process behind that?
Right, yes.
Relative to the wetlands?
Okay.
DPW's jurisdiction's not wetlands.
Right, that's, that's correct. That was more of like a side, you know, something else to keep in mind. You know, their primary concern was the near water lane system is pretty close to capacity, right? And by, we, we initially talked about, what if we took everything to near water? Right, that was, that was, we went, our initial proposal with DPW. Their concern was that because the capacity is also, is limited out there, that we'd be surcharging the catch basin, right? There's a catch basin somewhere right about here, near the bus loop, where that exits now, that the water would actually bubble out of that catch basin onto near water, and that would create, especially in the winter, you could, that could create an icing situation right in front of the school.
So you're only talking, if you go to your slide page 16?
Okay, which one is that?
It's the one with downstream drainage network.
Okay. Yes.
You're talking the distance between the Henley property, see the Henley, where the Henley property line, yep?
Yeah.
To the T, right?
To where it all converges?
Yeah, that's the distance.
Okay, so.
So instead of going through two and four, and then between 38 and seven, and then to those two backyards.
Right, so, yeah, so the distance along near water, this is one inch equals 250 feet, so, yeah, so you're a thousand feet or more, I would say.
And Ed Gentile did not want you to do that.
He did not want us to do that, right?
Okay. There's no way that PNC is going to override what Ed Gentile says. Okay. What else? With regards to the, the bus loop, can you go to the landscaping plan?
Sure.
Bingo. For pro-site conditions. So if my kid lives at seven pasture, or nine pasture lane, walks to school, how does he get to school?
Okay, I believe there is a sidewalk here on the west side of near water.
There 100% is.
Right?
But he lives, he lives near the P-L-A-N, that's where his house is.
Right, yeah, so they would have to cross near water, and then cross at some point here, I don't remember exactly where the crosswalk is, maybe Craig, I don't know if.
So they're going to cross it, cross it back?
Where? If some, a, a student lives on pasture lane, what would their be, their walking route to the school?
Well, we can ask the architects, too, I mean, they, they can't do.
There's, there's a crossing down.
They have to go to the back room.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
So my kid lives at nine, at nine or 10, or I almost bought 32 pasture lane. So I'm walking to school, he's going to cross?
Yeah, for the record, Craig Ansett, Time Bond. Yeah, so they would have to cross, there's a crossing at pasture lane, I believe.
So you're saying he's going to cross near water?
Right, there's a, from pasture on, let's see if I can point to it. So pasture's here, there's a crossing.
Yeah, go to the other one, go to the one that's proposed.
Okay.
Yep.
The pasture's here.
Yep.
There's a crossing to the sidewalk, then they would either cross within the driveway here, or off the driveway over on this side. So that is something we can, we can look at.
See, if you put, see where the, see where the bus loop is, with bus loop, so if you can put a sidewalk?
Correct.
You turn the, the bottom part of the bus loop, there's a rock wall there that I jumped when I was out there. And that's what the woman's talking about, kids jump the wall. You know, I get little kids, too.
Yeah, it's something we can look at.
This is where I get to confess that I, I lived at 19 pasture lane when I went to Henley School.
Wow.
And I trans, I, I trespassed over number four.
He's right there.
I'm sorry. But, yeah, but long before you. We called it the worst nearest place. But anyway, there was an opening in the wall behind you, and we walked right through there, and it was no problem. I'm sure that's different now.
Stay, stay on the eight-foot easement, and you'd be fine.
Yeah, that's on the south, the other side of the property. That was too far to walk.
Oh, that's true, that's true. So my, my question is, could you put a sidewalk there, or just, it's, it's a pretty rock, rock wall?
Right.
Then you're going to, you're going to bust it up anyway.
Well, ultimately, we can do what we can do on our site. There's still a gap between this corner of the property and pasture where the crossing is. So that, that's the challenge, there's not a sidewalk network on that side of near water.
I agree with you 100%, I, I get it.
And so, you have a crossing right at, right at pasture. You don't want to have too many mid-block crossings, especially with all the school operations going on. So we can, we can look at the idea of relocating that crossing, or the town deciding to do a sidewalk along that segment, or, or adding your crossing.
Because the sidewalk you're looking for would, would go from the pasture lane to the beginning of the bus loop.
Correct.
That's what you're looking for, so it's, I don't know, 25 feet, something like that?
Correct.
Right, so the kid that lives at nine can walk, get to that sidewalk at the corner, walk in and hit the bus loop, and he's on the property.
Yeah, extending the sidewalk within the site.
Yeah.
From the bus loop, which, which ends right here, right now, and going down to the corner of the site.
And then can you talk about the landscaping behind Mrs. Boris's house, which is on two?
I'm going to have to turn that back to Joe on that one.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Again, for the record, Joseph Canis, so what you see in the proposed plan diagram here on the, on the right, you'll see, you'll notice some trees are screened out, those are existing trees, and you'll see some trees that are darker green. And we are proposing some new trees in this area here, immediately south of the bus loop extension, and additionally, some screening here, and some additional screening, which I believe might be behind number four pasture. But we are proposing some new trees in that area. Those are part of the 21 new trees that are, I'm sorry, 41 new trees that are being added for the net impact increase of 21 trees. I don't know what species they are, they, those are on your landscaping plan that was submitted.
If you can tell Mrs. Boris, since it's her backyard, that would be good.
Mrs. Boris prefers to have a pond in her backyard.
Right, yeah.
What, what is that about?
There's, there's.
I think that's a detention.
That's a detention.
No, that was the underground pond.
Oh, okay. So the underground pond is.
Yeah, yeah.
We understand.
I got it.
That's the first thing that we talked about, because that Coltech detention system, the only spot on the property is in that one spot we picked.
And I think, I think just to flesh that out further, can you talk about the pitfalls to a pump system for stormwater management?
Okay, yeah, so for a pump system, you know, as I said earlier, stormwater systems, you know, typically, 99.9% of them are run by gravity, right? Because you don't have to have gravity. Once you get to a pump station situation, there's a ton of maintenance requirements, right? You have to have a generator, so there's a lot more human intervention that's required, and, you know, it ratchets up the, the amount of maintenance that's required for a system. In addition, right, if you do pump it, you're still, you're actually going to be pumping more water, right? It's going to be coming out at a faster pace because you're actually pumping it. If you're pumping it to near water, right, you, you, we still have the same concern, that doesn't take care of DPW's concern with bringing additional runoff to near water.
And theoretically, the pump chamber would be at that lowest point?
Right, exactly, right. You have to collect it at the lowest point, right? Because if you think of like any of the sanitary sewer pump stations in town, they're always located at low points, and then they pump up to the treatment plant.
Right, and then, and then a failure of that would just be sort of catastrophic, or you'd have all of the water unmitigated, unmaintained flowing.
That, that's correct.
Was there something else any of the neighbors asked, or you still want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, go ahead, you go.
Is there, we have, did I miss anything that Joe could answer?
The only other question I had, Joe, is, is just that, that section of pipe that's been called derelictor, or is, is there a plan to scope that?
Yes, that, that's, that's the purpose of cleaning it, right?
Well, so we're, we're cleaning the section that is in the designated easement.
Right.
We've got a section that's, you know, questionable easement area, I believe, running across one of the neighbor's properties. Is there, is there some intention to scope that portion of the pipe as well?
DPW has scoped the portion within the right-of-way, so that's going across pasture lane.
Right.
Board of Ed is in the process of cleaning the pipe on four pasture between Henley and pasture.
That's between two and four.
Right, for the purposes of scoping that pipe.
Okay.
Right, there is no, right now, there's been no discussion from DPW about scoping a portion south of pasture lane, because the ownership is, they're still trying to figure out who really has the maintenance responsibility for that, that hasn't been defined.
I bet you if you ask the man at home's number seven, he would just scope it tomorrow.
I was just going to say, if you had consent.
He's right there.
We're here, so, so I see.
All right, I'm going to talk.
You have a good one, are we in, please?
Just, hang on one second.
Right.
So if, if you had consent from the neighbors, or DPW had consent from the neighbors, that's something we could, we could explore?
If, if that, if DPW consents to it, and if the property board consents to it, I absolutely think that's a fantastic idea, to scope, you know, through those private properties, absolutely. But, there's, there's some legal questions there, we'll share, kind of above.
Can I, can I ask you one question?
Of course.
Can I, I have a, just a theoretical question for you. Not that it's part of this plan, but if the town were to engage in a project to increase the size of the, of the sewer from the top of near water to that T junction? To make it uniform at 18 inches, I believe, all the way, so that 1,000 feet, they rip up the road, they dig it up, they put in an 18-inch pipe. If that were the case, could you dump all of the water to near water? And would the capacity issue go away? Or even if we increase that to 18 all the way, even though it's not part of the project, but even if we could, would that still create a capacity issue?
Well, to the extent that you can increase the diameter of the storm drain going down near water, you'd be able to send more flow in that direction because you've increased the capacity, right? And there's some other issues that go along with it, right? You have to take a look at, you know, do you have enough cover over the pipe? You have to take a look, you know, are there any potential utility conflicts, things like that, that are, you know, tend to get more granular. But, you know, from a high-level overview, yes, if you were to, you know, upgrade that 12-inch, you know, 1,000-plus feet of 12-inch pipe to 18, that would increase the amount of capacity available in your order, and more of that could be sent in the direction of near water lane. And that, you know, would be a relatively simple fix, you know, say if Henley was built the way as it is proposed.
My next question.
Right, the town could go back and maybe, you know, do, put a veer in that manhole, we made that manhole oversized, right, to direct more flow towards near water. So it's, so we made it so that the town could do some future adjustments also.
And, and just to be clear, in that hypothetical best future of Darien, where we put in a bigger pipe, we fix the system so it drains everything into near water, even in that scenario, water still goes into the pasture lane pipe, no matter what?
I, I think.
Right, from all the excess runoff of the fields and all the stuff that naturally. Right, from all the excess runoff of the fields and all the stuff that naturally drains into it.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, you'd always have some level of, uh, runoff going into that pipe system. Uh, you know, it would, you know, in that theoretical situation, it would be probably a lot less.
Sure.
Right.
But it doesn't eliminate the near water pipe. There's no way to, or, or, excuse me, the pasture lane pipe.
Right, exactly.
That stays, even in our perfect scenario where we do all this extra work.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Right, but Ned, just to further, can we change that pipe four years from now? From twelve inches to eighteen inches?
Okay, uh, uh, the one in near water?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Then, then, then you can bypass the other one.
Right, exactly, then you could, you know, divert more towards near water when that, because you'd have the extra capacity to do it at that time.
Right, so I have to speak to the sewer commission and those kind of guys.
Yeah, you don't want to sell...
No, I'm serious, I mean, cause it's, it's, this project's this project, it's that, that pipe, changing that pipe from twelve to eighteen inches has got nothing to do with the school budget.
Yeah, it's town.
It's town.
Yeah, right, at that point, you're off school property, you're in the town right of way, it becomes a public works project.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have, does Al Jim want to speak? No, this guy.
I listen to Doug Bora again through near water lane. So the question was asked, what happens to the pipes south of pasture lane? Has it been routed out? It was a fuzzy answer. It hasn't been. It's been done once in thirty-four years that my wife and I've lived there, which is half the time since it was put in in the late forties. And probably in two thousand seventeen, Tom Ross, who lives at nine pasture lane, his wife Anne is here too, wrote a letter to the superintendent of schools, no, head of the board of education, head of DPW, head of planning and zoning and the first electman, saying, "We have a downstream downgrade water runoff problem from Henley School." This is years before we had an HHR committee. And we sent this letter, return receipt requested, and we got this response from the town many years ago. The head of the board of education sent it to interim super, then an interim superintendent of schools. He wrote a very thoughtful letter, right away, he was right on it, he knew the issue and he said, "I understand your concern, I'm sensitive to the problem you have, not my, uh, talk to the town." So then we talked to the town, we heard from the head of the DPW that, "I've checked with town council, John Wayne Fox, there's ambiguous ownership of that middle of the three easements, even though the town has responsibility for this one and the front of it, north of it, and the one behind it to the south, and said, "Well, we can't prove who owns it." So it's not our responsibility, so Board of Ed looked this way, town looked this way, and we're here five years later having to prove our case that we got water. You need to follow A eighty, you can't have water being dumped on our property, forgetting that it's going into an EP wetland zone. It just, it's not, it's not, it's not consistent with your own regulations, so thank you very much.
I just, just to set the record straight, I don't think we got a fuzzy answer, I think the answer's very clear, that they hadn't scoped it.
Yeah, they haven't.
Because of, because of that, the issue that was just raised. So I mean, one of the solutions would be for you to grant an easement to the town.
It's his, it's his.
Or, or the owner, owner of that, that property to grant an easement to the town and let them take ownership and let DPW do their job.
They can do it.
No, no, that's...
Cause he, you're, you're, I think he's nine pasture lane.
You're it, no, you're it.
I'm in the legal process.
Great, and then he's seven, okay.
Right, I mean, you have to do it legally through the town, but, but the town, I mean, the town's hands are tied because DPW can't go on private land and scope and, and router and put in a new pipe, they can only maintain what's granted to them.
Right.
Okay.
Guys, this is...
Could I have your name again, please?
Tom Ross, nine pasture lane.
Thank you.
This is getting kind of silly. What Doug said to you was that we did go to the town. We asked the town to fix the pipe, to scope the pipe, whatever they had to do. They said it's not their responsibility. Okay, so this is what we're saying, I give them permission, this is what the town said, that's why we all have this problem.
Right, but you can't just, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, grant permission, you gotta go to the town, you have to ask them to take...
Okay, but we've gone to the town and they've said no. So what you guys are proposing is additional water. I know you've got a containment system, but that containment system pretty quickly goes to pasture lane, okay? It should be the opposite. Or that pipe from the head of, uh, near water, that's a great idea, that ought to be done. And you guys should make that an obligation, okay, of this project being proved, that be done, not, not four years from now, but now.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy, can we just get those guys back on the loop again? It's this piece.
I don't know what that means.
Gotta get...
Do you want to get DPW back?
DPW, yeah, I'll, I'll move my lap.
It's really beyond the scope of us, I think.
It cannot be on ours, can it?
Hi. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you're up next, sorry.
Hi, Alex Boris to pasture lane. Are you guys able to bring back up the site plan with the bus loop? I just want to clarify the traffic, uh, question. I can do it. There it is.
There you go.
Okay, so, right now, uh, kids, what, what they have to do is, kids from anywhere south or from, you know, really, what is it? From southwest, um, they all walk up this sidewalk and there is a crosswalk like right about here, but they all kind of, they either have to cut across the road, which isn't ideal, and then they cut through the stone wall and then go in and take this sidewalk, which isn't awesome, or they have to walk all the way up to this corner, walk across, go into this gate over here, and that's kind of the two ways that the kids are entering, um, the school today or exiting the school today. With this, it's, there's not really enough room for a sidewalk on this side, there's like a hundred-year-old oak trees there. It's better if you have a crosswalk here that connects to a sidewalk that then can take the kids in because right now, it's like, they're gonna be putting into the bus loop and it's not great. And then when the kids exit, so the first graders and the kindergarteners to get picked up, they would have to go to the corner here, is that right? So that's why parents park here. That's why you have the parents standing there, is because of that. And, I don't know, you're gonna have a whole host of parents, probably like thirty, forty parents, maybe more, depending on the size of the kindergarten classes, which have been increasing, I think there's what, five, six of them this year? So all of those kids that aren't either gonna be picked up driven, so you're gonna have, I don't know, let's say, is there twenty kids, twenty-six kids in the class? That's a lot of parents picking up kids, we're getting dropped off here, like, you're gonna need another entrance or another way to have kids egress the school. And, you know, right now, you're gonna have a ton of traffic kind of hitting all these other areas, so, like, I would just encourage this board, this planning committee, and you guys are awesome, you guys actually listen to us, so that's kind of cool. Um, so, I would say, like, if you guys can think about the walking situation, like, we should have been, we should be encouraging more kids to walk to school, more parents to walk to school, walk their kids to school versus taking cars and dropping off and having this huge traffic jam. Like, if there's a way to make the school more walkable, I think that's more ideal versus I'm just seeing more and more driveways, which seems the opposite of the way we want to go as a community, so, I don't know. That's my, uh, one thing on the traffic piece. And then my other thing on the stormwater management issue, which obviously is ongoing, can we ha, like, I don't know if it's possible, again, not an engineer, but can we have multiple systems that would be here instead of just one big one holding ninety-six thousand gallons of water? Like, we already have one in the parking lot, why couldn't we have one in the field? Have one in this field. And then, you know, we know it's gonna end up here, but why don't we just kind of hold it? It overflows, hold it, overflows, hold it, overflows, versus just having this one big one that's behind all our houses and frankly, it scares us all, right? Like, you got ninety-six thousand dollars, thousands of gallons of water that, you know, some of it's gonna go into the ground, we know, you know, we see what happens uh, in everyone's backyard when it rains, yeah, it gets wet, soggy, there's no berm behind our house. So I would just say, like, if we can create a system where it kind of holds up here, then holds here, like, this is the steepest grade. I can tell you, I live here, steepest grade, then it flows, it flows from this site too, so this is, and then it comes down here and then it comes down here and then it comes down here. But if we could have multiple systems, I think that's a more ideal solution than having kind of this one in the back. Again, not an engineer, just, you know, neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, ooh, another bite at the apple?
Stephen Gabriel, it's four pasture lane. Um, I was gonna exactly basically say the same thing. I know Joe had mentioned when you're talking about the retention ponds, different areas of the school, you said, "Well, this is fifty-five feet, it's gonna be too high." Well, the question is, can retention system be put further, deeper into the ground or is there a problem of it crushing? And so that we, instead of, again, having one large system behind our homes, have multiple retention systems and can they go further in the ground if, if there's a question of elevation? That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, what do we want to do with this one? Want to keep it open or you want to close it?
There are outstanding issues, the commission needs further input or feedback. Close the hearing, once you close the hearing, uh, I don't have to hear the agenda for...
Do we need to keep it open to get the...
No, no, you don't, I just want the file. And if they, if they add a sidewalk, I don't think you have to keep it open either.
Yeah, the only thing you'd keep it open for is if they, if the applicant wanted to explore multiple detention facilities.
Right, and that's, we gotta ask out of Canis and of Chris Price. Right, cause this one conforms. Yep. What do you think?
We only have sixty-five days of extension.
Right, so we need confirmation, extension for its decision. So what we're discussing here, Chairman O'Danny, if this is a site plan only, which is a little unusual in Darien because oftentimes things are special permit uses, which give the commission sixty-five days from the close of the hearing to make a decision. A site plan only is sixty-five days, soup to nuts, the whole thing. So, right now, we're at day fifty-six, so certainly we'll need an extension from the applicant to even close the hearing and make a decision in a couple of weeks from now, deliberate the next meeting and decide the week after, so...
Jeremy, one other thing I think might be helpful just for the general public is, is our scope of authority. I think there's sort of some expectation that we have broad-reaching authority to institute sidewalks along near water and...
Or to hire crossing guards, cannot do that. Or to require the police to hire a crossing guard. Or tell them where to put a crossing guard.
Or require DPW to replace a line that's, that's on private, I, I mean, I think that there's just a general expectation that we can do some things that are just well beyond the scope of authority.
Certainly, many of the suggestions as we put it, put together the minutes, we can bring it to their attention, hey, here's some ideas and concepts that might be helpful, but, uh, there's certain things certainly, right, that are out of our jurisdiction.
All right, let's go with Chris Price and Canis, is there anything you want to add based upon what comes, that we, that we change your system?
Chris Price, the chairman of, co-chairman of the HHR Building Committee. Appreciate all the really thoughtful comments from everybody, appreciate the careful peer review on the, on the drainage plan, obviously. Appreciate the very, very hard work of our design team. To the extent that things are being suggested off the, you know, our jurisdiction kind of ends at the school property line, okay? We're trying to design the best system, um, to improve, to, to work with the renovation that's being done at the school. Right now, a hundred percent of the stormwater ultimately drains to pasture. The design, as people have heard, and I think it's important to emphasize, reduces that by close to, you know, reduces that by close to thirty percent. Sounds like the goal of the neighbors is to have that reduced to zero. I don't know if that is an engineering matter, is possible or not. I think this is, you know, the optimal system given what we have. But at the end of the day, exploring things, um, like more capacity on near water and the implications of that, I think you're right, it's beyond the scope, beyond the jurisdiction of this committee, certainly beyond the jurisdiction of our committee. I guess the question is, how do we get that, and I think Jeremy was alluding to it, how do we get that in front of DPW, for example, or environmental protection, for them to consider that? I'm not suggesting any of those are bad ideas, they're probably all really, really good ideas, but someone needs to study the trickle-down effect, right? Like, what happens if suddenly there's more capacity diverted from the wetlands behind pasture to Holly Pond? Does Holly Pond have the capacity to deal with that? Can we put it, can they put in an eighteen inch pipe? All great ideas, but we need to figure out how to get that from this discussion onto the desk of the people who can, who can consider that. But, uh, cause that's not within the scope of our authority and I don't think it's in the scope of your guys' authority as well, so...
Then, agreed, and, and, and if the engineers say it conforms with A eighty, you know, that's...
It's kind of where it ends.
Kind of, sort of, yeah, unless we get something that, that doesn't, that argues it, um, that we can have water. But with regards to like the landscaping and, and additional bushes or something like that on that ones, we can do that after the fact, right?
Well, the Board of Ed can always put more trees or plantings on their property, they don't need anyone's permission to plant a tree.
Right.
Right.
And then, you know, cutting a, cutting a sidewalk if it exists, if it's possible, you, I mean, to the, one gentleman's point, you know, he said he can look at it, we don't need to keep the hearing open for that, do we?
No.
And again, just to address the bus loop, the extended bus loop, again, the goal of that is to get buses off of near water, right? The goal is not to, the goal is not to create more traffic on near water, it's actually to reduce traffic on near water by getting more buses that, more buses into campus.
That's what the principal told us.
Correct.
Yeah, she told me that directly.
Thanks.
Anything else we need to add to this application? All right, what do you guys want to do? Keep it open, close it, or close it?
We need an extension of time for the applicant to make a decision to February seventh.
Okay.
Can you explain that?
The commission, under state statutes, has a very limited amount of time to make a decision on this application. That time ends in nine days.
We don't have a meeting between now and nine days.
So...
But what is the difference between...
I'm sorry, could you come up to the, uh, mic, uh, thank you so much.
What is the difference between closing an application or, and taking action on an application?
For a site plan application, which is what this is.
Right.
The statutes take a little, look at it holistically, you have sixty-five days to deal with this. Whereas other types of applications, which we'll talk about shortly, special permit, they have sixty-five days to start the hearing, thirty-five days to leave the hearing open, sixty-five days to make a decision, and there's all kinds of extension time beyond that. Whereas site plans are sixty-five days, soup to nuts, and the applicant can grant an additional amount of time.
So we, we need, we need a little bit more time from tonight to be able to draft the resolution and then vote on the resolution.
Right, cause you're still waiting, keep in mind, you're still waiting for Architecture Review Board on this, which is next week.
Okay.
The commission will likely deliberate on this if the hearing closes today on the twenty-fourth or thirty-first of January, and then they'll likely vote at the meeting after that.
He can't have an extension if it's open?
We can't, we can't...
He needs to just extend the time to deliberate.
Yeah, deliberate, we can't...
I guess the question is, do you need time to deliberate?
Yes, cause we, we can't, we can't even give you a final resolution until we get the report from, um, Architecture Review Board.
The commission must do all its deliberations open. So it's not like tomorrow morning I can call all these guys, "Hey, what do you want to do?" and write it up and have it ready next week. It's all gotta be public. So we have to do all deliberations at the next available meeting, which might be two weeks from today.
But just to be clear, the, the hearing's closed.
Right, you can't take more evidence, but these guys, and Amy Barzanti, who'll have to get up to speed, will talk it out. Then they'll tell us to write up a decision, and then they'll vote on that decision. So it's usually two nights to do that, sometimes it's three on a complex application where you're here till ten o'clock at night and you have to make sure every topic is covered thoroughly to address everybody's issue in this room.
Yeah.
Right? The commission's not gonna gloss over it.
Just, just, just to put it a different way, if they don't grant the extension, then it's almost an automatic denial, right?
Or the commission could, if you say, "I'm not granting extension," the commission can meet a special meeting next week and just vote to deny it.
We, we need an extension anyway.
It's not gonna slow you down, you've got two other schools that haven't even made it through the pipeline.
Right. But again, they're each separate, they're each separate projects.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
So, so that's okay, yes?
Sure, if that's what we need to do.
Yeah. All right, so with regard to if you want to submit something else later, we'll just submit it to staff and, and do whatever you guys do. But, so with that said, we can vote to close this hearing tonight, um, and then these guys can submit whatever they need to submit to staff. This is not super material.
Make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close, second. Those in favor? Great, okay. Thank you everybody for your time on this, and then I think we'll talk about the other one.
All right?
I think a five-minute break.
Uh, sure.
Yeah, can we take a two-minute break? Two-minute break.
Are you going to take a five-minute break?
I think it should be five.
Well, I just needed, we're off the record.
Yes.
Additions to Royal Elementary School, including eliminating temporary portable classroom buildings, replacing the library learning commons, correctly sizing and special, correctly size general and special subject classrooms, upgrading building systems, adding parking spaces to the existing parking areas for the site-to-site activities, including adding landscape plantings, restoring and adding the hardscape areas, installing and stormwater management. The 8.3-plus miles acre subject property situated on the west side of Mansfield Avenue at the northwest corner, forbids intersection with Royal Road, and is shown on Cessar's map number six as lot 54 in the R1 half residential zone and the municipal use overlay zone. MU, public hearing opened on November 15th, 2022. Okay. This one, I don't think we had too much, why do we leave it open? Do we remember?
I was not present.
Okay. Fred was here. All right. Take us away.
I'll be very brief.
Go ahead.
Eric Keier, KDD Architects Principal, here representing the town of Darien and Darien Public Schools. Royal Elementary School, in this case, has very few issues, but we did want to quickly go through some of the landscape plan changes, as well as also show the construction phasing plan to you, similar to what we were showing at Hinley. So this is the proposed site plan. It shows that there's two areas where proposing additional parking, one on the east side and another on the west side to gain the parking spaces that we need. If there's any questions related to stormwater on this campus, which we don't believe there are, Joseph Canis is here to answer any questions associated with that. But you can see here, on the right side of the building, on the picture on the right, you can see a long linear subsurface detention basin, similar to what was being proposed at Hinley. We will be meeting with the ARB next week. They asked us to make some modifications to the landscape plan, including adding some additional trees, and to look at different plantings on campus. And so we plan on this next week, going through this at a greater level of detail. They were looking for some, I'm not sure if whimsical is the correct answer, but some seating moments on campus. And so you can see here, in red, there's some, so C-shaped and S-shaped seating moments that are underneath some new trees that are proposed to be planted along the campus. We've talked about this in the past, which is the outdoor classroom, which has multiple seating arrangements, place surfacing, a performance stage, some boulders for play. They were looking for less formal seating on campus, and so that's what's being proposed here. In terms of the site logistics plan, this in front of you is the summer of '23, soon we'll get through this process. In red is the construction fence. In the summer, we are strictly addressing one major issue, which is the new electric service, and we're trenching in there to bring conduit in so that, because we're relocating the generator and electric service from the east side of the building to the west side of the building at the northern end. During the school year, '23, '24, in yellow, you can see the construction site. The construction access is just in from the corner of Royal, and during that first phase, during the school year, we're proposing two additions. One's a first and second grade addition, and the other is the demolition of the library, existing library, construction of a small addition on the original wing, which will ultimately be the library slash learning commons. Traffic patterns on campus during the school year do not change. In yellow is the bus loop, and to the left of that, in green, is the parent drop-off pickup loop. During the summer of '24, the construction site changes a little bit because of the first and second grade wing, as well as the library learning commons, and outdoor learning garden there has been complete, and that's what you can see in dark green. And you can see that the construction site in yellow has changed, still the same access point adjacent to the intersection, but at that point, we're demolishing the modulators and demolishing the first grade classroom wing, which is at the northern end, and constructing the new art and music wing. And this is what you're seeing during the school year, that that's consistent with the summer of '24. And then the summer of '25, basically, we're finishing up work on the inside of the building in terms of the mechanical systems, et cetera, that are being proposed there, as well as some of the additional renovations. And that construction site remains the same over the course of the summer, as we're finishing the art and music wing. With that, Craig, if you have a moment, just to quickly go through the peer review?
So, for the record, Craig Yanis from Tyon Bond. Yeah, same thing as last time, just going to go through the comments quickly on the peer review from the letter dated the 14th and from today. The first two comments stated that the traffic volumes and analyses were acceptable. The next one was about the field observations. Again, we saw similar operations out there as the peer reviewer. It was noted that there was additional storage in the bus loop, that the first bus pulled all the way around. It'll be instructed to do so in the future as necessary. And then the last comment related to the parking on the west side, so the upper-left part of your screen here, this area. So the parking is, is in front of where some parents pull up and drop off or pick up their students. What we're proposing to do is make those spaces staff parking only, so that they're not being active during that operation. There's a sidewalk circulating around the outside of the parking spaces. That's continuous from Royal all the way around the parking all the way to the building. And so that was the one thing that was in the last comment letter. And that was pretty much it. Again, we think we've addressed all the comments and should be all set.
Okay. And that's what, we'll let Craig speak for a second. Is there any other slides behind that, Eric?
I think that's it.
Okay. Then let's get Greg Del Rio. You want to just comment on that for...
Greg Del Rio, professional engineer in state of Connecticut, traffic engineer for Hardestine Hanover. So, yeah, I concur with most of what Craig said there, was the major concern was those parking spaces in the northwest corner, which is currently, currently the whole curb is used even beyond those parking spaces for the drop-off pickup. And even with that usage, there's three or four or so vehicles that still queue as they're waiting to, for the drop-off pickup activity to complete. So, the concern was if those spaces were there and we lose the three or four spaces for the drop-off pickup, that would exacerbate some of the queuing on the street, and slow things down a little bit, and add to some of the congestion on the street. So, it wasn't in the comments, but it did come up during our last hearing, the idea that maybe there could be some kind of a treatment, not only bringing the sidewalk behind, but allowing that space to be utilized. So, part of the solution was to make that staff parking, so that those parking spaces aren't active. But we just, you know, maybe the consideration for that idea that came up last time, which didn't come into the official comments or the letter...
Because they moved the sidewalk to the backside, right?
Well, the sidewalk, I think, was always there even the last time. And that allows anybody who's parked over here to then access around and get to and from the school. That's fine. But the concept was to, you know, to really activate this space and not use that, and maybe make it just a little more pedestrian-friendly. If they, the reality is, they're going to still use this space, right? So the cars will park there, staff, so I have, you know, the safety concern is more or less taken care of. But then, they'll be walking in and around the fire lane, basically.
So maybe you can put a curb there.
So if we can just push it in another few feet, or in place of that sidewalk, do a drop sidewalk or some kind of treatment, maybe that's something to look at or consider.
Do you look at that and consider it? Okay. Great.
It's a little bit of a trade-off, right? Because this is nice to have around there. I don't know if they have space, if they can push it, but at the end of the day, it might be a nice idea to definitely push it. Besides that, that, everything else, Mark.
We got your letter today.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for the traffic guys? We're good? Okay. Joe Canis, we got your letter. You got to go with two seconds, then Craig Flaherty's going to sign off on your letter, I think, too.
Okay. For the record, Joseph Canis, licensed professional engineer in state of Connecticut. I'm a principal engineer at Tyon Bond. I did the stormwater management design for Royal. This one was pretty basic. It was probably the easiest of the three. We're reducing the impervious cover by about .15 acres, but we still have some stormwater management features on site. We received the peer review comments dated November 16th. We responded to those comments. Again, they were all very good comments. We did receive Mr. Flaherty's response that we were in compliance with Section 880, with some additional conditions that could be taken care of as conditions of approval, and we do not take any exception to those, so we'll be incorporating those.
Okay, then he sent you a letter, or he sent us a letter on January 9th?
That's right. The January 9th letter is the last one.
Okay. So you're cool with those two?
Yeah, we're okay with those comments.
Okay. Hey Craig, why don't you just give us two seconds on your January 9th letter?
Can Bonnie record a thumbs up from the last row?
Bonnie didn't get that in the tape.
Yeah, for the record, Craig Flaherty, professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. Again, reviewed the original drawings, requested revisions and further information, received updated drawings, and have largely found the updated drawings report to be consistent with Section 880 of the zoning regulations. A couple of suggestions that we believe could be handled prior to the request for a zoning permit include, really just coordinating one call-out to make sure that the stormwater system indicated on the plan matches the stormwater system in the calculations. That's just, it's just a call-out, really. And then the second was in the area of the new parking here on the west side of the school. They've added an underground infiltration system to mitigate any impacts from this increased impervious coverage, new impervious coverage, even though it's an overall decrease. And we just want them to hone in on that a little more carefully as they get into construction documents and suggest some details that they add.
Fantastic. You're good with those, right? Yep, he said, they said they would look into it. Thank you, sir. Any questions for these two guys?
No.
Saying no. Okay. Anything else we need to add on this? We're good?
Anyone from the public?
Anyone in the public like to speak to this application? Nope, he's the only guy that's from the public. All right, look for a motion to close.
We need the extension.
We still need the extension.
We need the same extension on this one, Chris.
Sure.
Great.
February 7.
Perfect. Okay. Motion to close. Jeff makes a motion, Mike makes a second. All in favor? Okay, that hearing's closed. All right, that concludes the end of the public hearing. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Then we have to do, are we, what's he here? Is he... Sir, what are you, what are you here for?
Deliberation, I was talking about...
Okay.
We've already read them.
I've read them. I've no real comment. Take them as one and bang them out right now. It's only going to take us 10 minutes. Might as well do it. We're already here.
Okay. What do we want to do about mandatory referrals? Do you want to talk about this in two seconds?
Let me take two seconds.
You have to get up there, or you don't really care?
No.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, see you, Chris. Thanks, man.
Next on the agenda is the three mandatory referrals for the school. Mandatory referral is under Section...
Should I read with the record?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. General meeting, time permitting. Next item is mandatory referral number 1-2023, Board of Selectmen, Hinley Elementary School, 10 Near Water Lane, Propose for substantial improvements to town property. I'll read the next one, and two. Mandatory referral number 2, 2023, Board of Selectmen, Royal Elementary School, 133 Mansfield Avenue, Propose for substantial improvements to the property. The next item is mandatory referral number 3-2023, Board of Selectmen, Holmes Elementary School, 18 Hoyt Street, Proposal for substantial improvement to the property. Jeremy, what do we got?
Right. State statutes require that Planning and Zoning Commission issue reports relative to certain things that are done by the town. Purchase a property, sale a property, leasing a property, and substantial improvements to town property, all relative to the town plan of conservation and development, which you should all have a copy. This is the most recent version. And the reason for that is, they want to make sure everybody in the town's moving in the same direction. So, usually referrals come from Board of Selectmen, sometimes in this case, it came officially from the Board of Selectmen, by potential scene from Public Works or Board of Ed. But basically, what the Board of Ed or Board of Selectmen has to do is come to you for a report. Certain times, depending on the vote of the commission to issue a report, if it's found to be consistent with the town plan, if it needs to go to the RTM, you just need a majority vote. If your vote or your report is negative, it's not consistent. Selling this building is not consistent with the town plan, then the RTM needs a two-thirds vote to overrule you, if the item needs to go to the RTM. So in this case, it's not an official decision of the commission, it's just a report you're issuing on whether what the town wants to do is consistent with the town plan. So in each of these three cases, Kate Bush, town administrator, has sent a report request, along with some backup from the town plan. The commission has 35 days from receipt of the report, the request, to issue its report. So the request came in a few days ago. The commission has till the end of January to issue a report. I think Fred and I are looking for feedback from the commission tonight. If you say start drafting something, we can have draft reports ready for your next meeting. If you believe that the reports are either consistent, or the additions and alterations are consistent with the town plan or not consistent. Usually, reports are pretty short, a page, a paragraph, because most times, it's pretty clear. Sometimes, they're not so clear, but I think in this case, it's expanding the school and making various improvements is probably consistent with the town plan, would be my guess.
Okay. So we got in our packets, we got three memos, all dated December 21st, from Kate Bush, to Jeremy asking for it. Then we also got inside our packets, Section 12, for the plan of conservation development. If you look at items, bullet points in the middle of the page, you can then get issues at Ox Ridge, schools examined, Darien does not have a possibility for some future schools. All the items in here, we talked about in 2016. So in my opinion, it's very consistent with the town plan conservation development. Any questions, comments on that?
We can have reports.
Looking for, my suggestion is, please draft up three reports...
Yep.
For these three things, to say they're consistent with town plan and conservation development.
We'll have them ready for the...
I'll touch on the portables, right?
Yeah, remove all the portables.
Remove all the portables.
I think that's, is that in here?
It should be, or it's a major safety issue.
Yes. Some elementarys have been using portables, classrooms since the 1980s. None of these 14 classrooms are directly attached to the school. You need to take them out for safety conditions and something else. So it's obviously in there. Okay?
Thank you. We'll have something ready for your review on the 24th, and then I'll give it plenty of time. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is deliberate possible decisions regarding the following. Coastal Site Plan Review Number 369 A's in Apple, Flood Prevention Application Number 428 A's in Apple, Land Filling and Regaining Application Number 538, Abigail and William Husberg at 6 Pret Island. I'm also going to open up the next one, or read the next one. Coastal Site Plan Review Number 155 A's in Apple, Flood Prevention Application... Coastal site plan review number one fifty-five A's in Apple, flood standard prevention application number three fifty-nine A, landfilling and regaining application number five thirty-nine A, eight Pratt Island LLC at eight Pratt Island. I'm going to read this one out there. Proposal to raise the existing residence, construct a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling in the same location, constructing of a new driveway, patio, terraces, and new pool area and spa, and perform related site development activities within regulated areas, including the regrading of the property, installation of stormwater management system. The application proposed to integrate the lot with number six Pratt Island while preserving separate lots. The hearing closes on the November twenty-ninth. In our packets, we got draft resolutions for both of them. What I would like to do is go over eight Pratt Island first, since they're both open. That is the overriding one, or the, the one with the bigger, the bigger stuff on it. I had, I think, a couple of questions. I hope I can find my draft. I can't find my draft, so I can't ask any questions. Here you go. I had something that I marked up. Questions, you guys, questions, type those, scrivener, Sarah, Jonathan, I have George, why don't you go first?
Just a quandary as to whether we're, we're being clear on eight Pratt. What is this? This is the, now therefore be it resolved. Items B and C under the performance bond. So the, B provides that the property owner shall cover the reasonable cost of any damage that is not pre-existing to near water land and/or Pratt Island that is shown directly caused by the construction work. In C, we provide that the commission acknowledges that this bond will not cover roadway repair costs to private roads within Noroten Bay and on Pratt Island. Shouldn't we, shouldn't the performance bond cover Pratt Island, too, if we're requiring that they pay any required, any damage?
Yeah, so the, the reason this was constructed like this was because the applicant during the public hearing put testimony into the record that they would be willing to make repairs to public as well as private roads, which would be roads within the Noroten Bay Association and on Pratt Island as well, which is outside of the Noroten Bay Association. However, in establishing this bond as part of condition C, it's our view that the commission is somewhat limited in what the bond may cover in terms of public versus private roads. It's really up to the Noroten Bay Association to enforce their own stipulation regarding repairs of any, of any road.
Did we do that on Delphide Island?
The bond implemented as part of Delafield Island was specifically for the landscaping on the property, so it didn't have anything to do with the private roads down on Delafield Island.
And we never do it for anything inside Tuconee?
Correct.
Yeah, I had the same question, so.
So, so B, where they are agreeing that they will pay the reasonable cost, that language does not include the roads of Noroten Bay Association. C specifically excludes Noroten Bay Association from the bond. But, and you're saying we, we, Noroten Bay is beyond our purview, basically. So should we be including a reference to it in C, or should we delete that?
A reference to Noroten Bay Association in condition C of the resolution is that.
Well, I guess, no, it's okay. We're saying the bond will not cover the roadway repair there.
Right.
Okay.
And the re, the, the reason we constructed condition B as, as laid out here is that, is simply because of the applicant's statement, the, the testimony they put into the record during the public hearing, that they would in fact be willing to make those repairs to the roadways, whether they were private roadways or public roadways.
Okay. Okay, that's all right, I mean, thank you.
I, I got your memo, which is dated December twenty-eighth, which answers some of the questions. And how, where you get the money from, from DBW, blah, blah, it's a note that's based upon amounts provided by DBW. My question is, how do we pick ninety near Water Lane?
Ninety near Water Lane was chosen because during the, the likely construction period for six and eight Pratt Island, there's other likely construction, including construction related to Henley School, as well as redevelopment of the Tweedy, the Tweedy Lots, single-family residential redevelopment as part of that subdivision. So, you know, we just figured that it's going to be difficult to sort of, you know, place any sort of road damage on the Hausbergs as, as opposed to, so, you know, who, who caused the damage, right? Was it the school?
Were it the Tweedy Lots?
Was it the Hausbergs? Was it?
Other projects.
Other projects.
That's fine, so it was a method to manage. You're all done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My other question was, I just want to make sure everybody knows that when we're talking about the, the, the ten trucks a week, a day, that's twenty trips a day, which is D as in dog.
Ten round trips.
Yeah, it's ten, ten round trips, so it's, it's twenty trips a day. And they're going past Henley School, which is on the construction, and they're going pat through Noroten Bay. Someone's fine with that. Right, it, it says if they're going to do more than eight, it's fine.
I had, there's just one, I had one minor scrivener's kind of note, because these are pretty similar. So item twenty-five on eight Pratt is basically the same as item twenty-one on six Pratt. But on twenty-one, you included the last sentence talking about the four hundred cubic yards, which is basically for the fill on six. But on eight, you didn't subtract out the four hundred and have an extra sentence that said, "An estimated fifteen hundred cubic yards of material is proposed to be placed on eight Pratt Island." So do we either want to add that sentence to make them somewhat uniform? Because like twenty-six is the same as twenty-two, twenty-seven is the same as twenty-three, twenty-eight is the same as twenty-four, but that one is different with that last sentence. So we should either add the sentence to eight Pratt Island in the finding or eliminate it from six Pratt Island to make it uniform. That's the only, all the others, the paragraphs are literally identical for most of these findings. And it's, it's not related to our finding, I just noticed that in the observation.
I would add, I would.
Because the, the projects are so closely tied with each other.
Right, which makes sense.
I think it makes sense to include the language.
Okay, so just say the same sentence, "estimated fifteen hundred cubic yards" for eight.
Four hundred.
Fifteen, fifteen hundred were added to eight, because they're estimated nineteen, they're going to be four to the fill in between and the fifteen hundred for the other. We might want to change the dates, the number of days. Seven plus or minus one, two point five plus or minus one, doesn't get you to a hundred and ninety trips at ten a day. So you might want to bump those up to, to like eight and three and a half. Right, because seven and five is going to be a hundred and twenty.
Right, yeah.
And you're saying it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and ninety. So if you bump them up even a day, you're barely at the bottom range of their estimate. So you want to kind of be in the middle, I thought.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust those.
Just the math is.
You're saying eight, three and a half is more accurate reflection.
Right, because seven and two and a half is, isn't going to, if they just do seven and two and a half each, you're at, you're at a hundred and twenty truck trips. You're not even at the minimum. Other than that.
The last thing I would do is, if, on number twenty-nine, can you add, add the word near Water Lane, Henley School, Weed Beach?
Is number twenty-nine on eight Pratt Island?
Yes. Mayor Clausberry, three, at public hearing information members also commented concerns large trucks, area roads, damage to surrounding properties. Talk about near Water Lane, Henley School, Weed Beach. And then for everyone's edification, we revised today in eight, item I, and I think we added the word and stabilize at the end of the sentence that Fred sent. So that number I and eight Pratt Island is getting adjusted. If everyone was fine with that, everyone saw that, that's fine. And Mike added the word stabilize, which is great.
Is that in both?
Yeah, so that, that was related to condition I as part of eight Pratt Island and condition G as part of six Pratt Island. After giving this some additional thought, the requirement for a site monitor from the beginning of construction to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new house seemed perhaps a, a bit excessive. We changed that to only require the site monitor for the portion of the project where they would be trucking and fill, filling, regrading of the property.
That's going to be the most.
Yeah, that's where they're going to care.
At Mike's suggestion, stabilization of the site as well.
Okay.
The, the only other thing I have, and Amy's not here, is she mentioned in the deliberations about potentially notifying other neighbors. Because of the location of this property, there's only like themselves to be noticed and like one other neighbor. But people four or five houses down on Pratt Island might not realize that they're going to have ten trucks coming through every single day. We don't have in our power to force them to notify other people, right? But we could have put it in here. So I just want to make sure we're aware that we did put it as a finding. We could certainly ask them to notify more people, right? In some finding, please notify everybody within a quarter mile.
Well, I think part of that is in here, because it says notify Noroten Bay Association in a lot of, a lot of spots. And then also, if you look at number, if you look at, what the heck is it?
Do we need to have them submit proof, like a receipt that they notified them, the same way we do with like a notification for the, the application?
It's usually something that we just coordinate amongst, you know, department staff, along with the applicant, to make sure everything's in place and the, the proper, in, in this case, the Noroten Bay Association has been notified, hey, look, you know.
And they can distribute it as they want.
Right.
So if you look at, at item H during construction issues, that's the way I think they did a great job. Where on days where more than eight large trucks go down, expect it arranged with traffic safety guard, flagman, police officers, pedestrians, ensure the safety on near Water Lane, Pratt Island. So near Water Lane is technically inside Noroten Bay.
Inside. They're going to have to have a cop out there almost every day, then.
You're going to have, you're going to have guide cars driving them down and all kinds of focus. Okay?
I mean, just to note, that the, the number of truck trips that they noted in terms of ten truck trips is relative to the amount of fill they'll be trucking into the site. There'll be other construction traffic in terms of.
That's just the fill.
Workforce coming in and out.
They got to bring in excavators and other stuff.
Lumber, et cetera, you know, it's.
That's not a truck trip.
Right.
Rings and delivery doesn't count.
Yeah.
Trusts and whatnot. Jeff, anything?
Good.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, looking for a motion to approve seven Pratt, um, eight Pratt Island as revised. Mike makes a motion, Adam makes a second. All in favor?
Five, zero, as amended. Thank you.
All right, seven, uh, six Pratt Island. Six Pratt Island.
Motion to approve?
I think it's the same. The only thing I had is on page five, you have eight Pratt Island as nine.
Correct, the, the.
Six Pratt Islands plans say eight?
Six Pratt Island plans say eight, yes. It was one set of plans submitted by the applicant. The plans.
That's fine.
Both properties are, are simply noted as eight Pratt Island.
So we're revising G as in girl, that other thing, and you're not revising twenty-one, but you're revising twenty-one the other way. Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the resolution on six as amended. Adam makes a motion, Jeff makes the second. All in favor?
Five, zero.
Five, zero. Okay.
Ten more minutes, guys?
Next, on the agenda, we're going to put approval minutes to next week and the chamber report next week. And I think the only thing, Jeremy's got a directors' report, he wants us to take some classes eventually. Is that, is that time set?
Yeah, I think I did. Put a memo when you passed it on?
Yeah, you did.
You did, Mark.
So the way it's going to default is we'll, we'll sign you all up. And then if you can't make it, or don't want to go, or whatever, let me know in the next two weeks.
Can we pick the class that we want to go through?
Yeah, I mean, once you sign up for the whole day, remember last time, you come and go, if it's a subject that you're not interested in. So you're doing it from home anyway.
Oh, it's from, it's Zoom?
Jason Klein.
I'm in. Can I get CLE for that, too?
I think you can.
We tried. I think Tara Kaylee tried last time. Okay, with that said, looking for a motion to adjourn. Jeff makes a motion.
I want to keep it open.
George makes the second.
Mike's already in his car, swerve it up.
Thank you. Good luck.